Okay, welcome to the April twenty seven, two thousand and twenty one Board of Education, Pooter School District Board of Education meeting. It is five thirty PM and I will call this meeting to order. The meeting tonight is being conducted both in person and electronically. Board members and some staff are meeting here in person while members of the public and other staff are watching the meeting remotely. Community comments will take place in person for those who registered to make the remarks this evenings. I'll launch right into the agenda. We'll go to item two point zero, which is approval of the agenda. Would any board members like to make changes this evening? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on and that will bring us straight up to community comments. So, community comments, I'll just read as usual. It's for public comment. It's for members of the community who registered to speak by the designated deadline. I will call up each speaker, one at a time. And this evening, given the number of speakers, I will limit the comments to two minutes per person. Anyone who exceeds the time limit or makes personal attacks, uses profanity, or identifies any student by name may be asked to immediately end their remarks and I'll make that judgment. Okay, with that, Tess I will call up the first person and that would be Shirley Lung, I believe. Welcome.
Thank you. Hello and good evening, everyone. My name is Shirley Lung and I'm here tonight as a member of the School Justice PSD campaign and to speak about the recent survey that the Community Advisory Council, or the CAC, initiated and to share some important concerns that we have with the survey and the data collected that will be used to inform your decisions on SROs in schools. So I just have four points that I'll share with you. The first one is that the survey target audience, or the sample population, was not representative of students who deal with SROs or who are impacted by them. That is, there was a lack of outreach to students who were directly affected or who are traumatized by SROs. There was not enough outreach that was done to the BIPOC LGBTQ differently abled students, students with IEPs, houseless students, undocumented students and their families, or those who historically and today continue to be least likely and able to complete self-reporting surveys. Third, the CAC did not sufficiently deal with concerns about a link to a description of the SRO program by the Fort Collins Police Services. And it was misleading for people filling out the survey to visit a page that is extremely biased and in fact contradicts much of the findings and the learnings that the CAC found regarding what SROs actually spend their time doing in PSD. And to then have to answer survey questions specific to the current SRO program. And then lastly, the Laramie County Sheriff posted misleading and incorrect information about the SRO program after the survey on his Facebook page. This abuse of power needs to be addressed by the board. Both of these two instances of misinformation is really concerning because a third of the respondents of the survey said that they felt they needed more information and felt uneducated enough to make a decision about what the role of the SROs are in schools. Everyone should have the right information to make informed decisions, but we don't right now. So the concerns I share with you today.
Please wrap up your comments if you would.
Yeah, they skewed data results towards a misleading perception of the roles of SROs and I hope you consider these when you're interpreting the survey data and making recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us.
Yes.
Okay, and next up will be Mr. Richard Jacques, please. Welcome.
Hello. My name is Richard Jacques. I'm grateful for the opportunity to speak here tonight, this evening. I'd like to thank you all for the commitment up to this point in regards to allowing time and research to be done in regards to alternatives to policing schools. I know that the group School Justice PSD has been working very hard on providing as much information and research on this topic. They provided much detail on how SROs operate in schools, including financial costs, disproportionate impact on students of color, and other marginalized students, long neglected mental health resources in schools, and the effects of SRO presence in schools and campus culture. Please take the information that was shared with you from the School Justice PSD group to inform your decision and recommendations on May eleventh. Communities of color have asked you to make schools safer for them. Please respect their needs. We have an opportunity to make a bold decision to increase student and campus health for our future generations and we should not pass that up. Most important things in life are to be respectful, to be honest, to be honest with yourself, I envision a public school system that values students, parents, and communities as decision-makers with fundamental human right to shape their education. In this educational system, schools are safe, healthy, and nurturing environments where every student has the opportunity to reach their full potential. Schools work towards preventing trauma, repairing harm, promoting healing, and rejecting a culture of punishment and criminalization. Please act on your spoken commitment to equal opportunity for all students and vote to remove SROs from our schools. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us. Okay, and next we will have Ms. Kimberly Medina. Welcome.
Hello. Last summer, PSD families reached out about our experiences as school resource officers. We told you children of color were targeted and treated differently by SROs, that students were questioned in front of SROs and charged with crimes, and that students who were put in the juvenile justice system could not get out. Parents and students shared stories of disciplinary issues becoming legal issues. Students of color told you they had been targeted, bullied, and harassed, and the school climate was not a welcoming one. You listened and you acted. You set a timeline and a goal of robust community input from communities of color and those affected by police in schools. You formed a diverse committee and agreed to take the recommendations of that committee and consider removing SROs in the coming year. If the past year has taught us anything at all, it has taught us that things cannot remain the same. In the summer of 2020, record numbers of people took to the streets to demand racial justice. The majority of those protesting were not from my generation, they were PSD students and recent PSD graduates. They told us that things must change and that they are tired of our excuses. It is easy to say that now is not the time for change, that it's too chaotic, we're coming out of a pandemic, we have a new superintendent, we can't change now. We could blame funding problems, time limitations, scarce resources, and say we need to wait, study the issue, form committees, get more data, delay decisions. But isn't that what we always do? Tell people of color, women, youth, and the LGBTQ community and other marginalized groups that while we feel your pain, we recognize the injustice, that now is just not the time. Now is the time. You have the testimony of students affected by SROs, the data on disparities in discipline and law enforcement referrals, and the recommendations of the CAC. If you do nothing, you're enabling a system in which vulnerable populations are marginalized, injustices ignored, and legitimate calls for change are summarily dismissed. You have an obligation to ensure that every student, including minority students in our district, are welcomed, respected, and able to learn and grow. Educating every child means you must be willing to listen, change, and adapt to the needs of all students in our district, including minority voices and those who are most vulnerable. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us. Okay, and next up is Courtney Dom. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Courtney Dom. I'm a member of the CAC, a parent of two children in the Pooter School District, and I've been a teacher for almost 20 years. I applied to be a member of the CAC because I believe in the power of a public education and I am committed to PSD's mission, which is to educate every child, every day. Over the past year, students and their parents have come forward, including via the CAC process, to share their stories and fears about interacting with police in classrooms, hallways, and playgrounds. I know that not everyone in our city believes, or quite frankly even cares, but the majorities indifference cannot negate these students' experiences or hide the fact that the president of SROs in our schools is undermining our promise to educate every child every day as told to us by our students and their parents. The members of the CAC worked hard to devise a set of recommendations on the role of SROs in our schools and the majorities implementation recommendation, which is to stop embedding police officers in schools in favor of a liaison type model, is a product of a lot of compromise and it offers a parsimonious and practical, not radical, solution that speaks to the wants and needs of different constituencies in our community. Placing police outside of schools enables them to deter and promptly respond to criminal activities and threats of violence as specified in the CAC recommendations while simultaneously removing barriers to educational access and attainment in the schools in fulfillment of PSD's promise and mission to educate every child every day regardless of one's identity. I recognize that this discussion is politically fraught and that you are under immense pressure to serve different constituencies. But I hope that you will take this opportunity to reimagine the relationships among law enforcement, our schools, and most importantly, our students. Because our children, my children, all of our children are truly our community's most vulnerable constituents. To that end, the CAC's proposed liaison model centers the needs of all of our students as opposed to some and fosters an educational environment where every child can learn and grow consistent with PSD's mission to educate every child every day. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for joining us. Okay, and next up will be Sean Neil Barron. Welcome.
My name is Reverend Sean Neil Barron and I serve our community as one of the pastors of Foothills Unitarian Church. I'm a parent of a student at Lincoln Middle School and this year I served on the CAC. Trustees, I don't envy the position that you are in. Today, you're being asked to step fully into your roles as trustees of our shared future, making a decision that will put you on the forefront of the inevitable movements for justice. A decision that will probably put targets on your back if you make it one way. But this is the mantle that you were entrusted to when you were elected, so I thank you for your service. Our year on the CAC was not easy. We wrestled with complex and challenging issues and our diverse group of educators, parents, and community members arrived at a striking consensus that law enforcement should be used only in specific circumstances, in specific roles, and as a last resort. That we should have social and emotional health supports be the first wave of response. And an overwhelming and diverse majority of our committee came to the conclusion that these roles could be implemented without SROs being embedded in schools. If you grew up as a white person, as I did, you were most likely socialized to trust law enforcement, to see their role as creating safety, not detracting from it. It's hard to imagine a world without police. And yet, as stated in our report, the overwhelming academic evidence shows that SROs do not contribute to safety in our schools, but are just assumed to because of white perspectives on policing. In fact, PSD has no comprehensive data to show how SROs actually create safety in schools. I invite you to trust the decisions of our committee, trust the majority opinion of our report, and to create a safer future for all our students. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us. And next we will have Ms. Cheryl Distasso.
Good evening, my name is Cheryl Distasso. I work with School Justice PSD and I'll be reading statements for you tonight from PSD parents. My name is Dr. Ray Black. I'm a professor of ethnic studies at Colorado State University. I serve on EDAC in the district and I'm in the core group of School Justice PSD. What I view as my most important job, though, and the most relevant to the conversation about school resource officers, is my role as the father of a fifth-grade African-American daughter in the Pooter School District. As the black father of a black daughter, I need to teach her the reality about how policing works in this country and in our community. I need to teach her how to behave around police officers, to keep her hands visible, to move slowly, to limit interaction. Basically, I have to teach her that what she learns about police interactions from SROs is dangerous. I have to do this because it would be irresponsible not to. Teaching her otherwise, as the news shows us every week, can get her killed. I urge you to consider the CAC recommendations to remove SROs and replace them with liaisons that are not housed in schools. This transition will keep all of our students safe. My name is Sarah Scobie. As the parent of three PSD students, two former and one current, I'm imploring the board to remove SROs from our schools. The United States incarcerates more people than any other country in the world. African-Americans are 12% of our population, yet make 37% of the prison population. These statistics haunt me as I read PSD's accounting of its own disciplinary data for the 2019-20 school year. While approximately 25% of the students in the Pooter School District are students of color, nearly 50% of students refer to law enforcement or discipline in PSD are students of color. How are our own data points not indicative of the larger broken system? National studies have not determined that SROs deter mass shootings. However, PSD research data does demonstrate that students of color are disproportionately disciplined by SROs. We are...
Ms. Distasso, please wrap up your comments.
Oh, okay. Yes, please remove SROs from schools. Thank you.
Thank you very much for joining us. Oops, next we will have Ms. Bethany Goodwin.
Hello, my name is Bethany Goodwin. I am a working mom here in Fort Collins. I have two children, one in elementary school and one who will be going to middle school this fall. And she will be very familiar to the counselors at middle school. I wanted to start by just thanking you for committing to serve all students in a just and equitable manner and ask that you address the disparities in treatment that we have seen in the data. I'm asking you not to renew the SRO contract and redirect the funds for mental health and professional, for mental health professionals and counselors. From what I've read of the CAC's liaison model, it seems very reasonable. So as a parent in this community, I'm asking you to consider that. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us. Okay, and next we'll have Tracy Sword join us.
Good evening, my name is Tracy Sword. First, let me say for the record that I'm only wearing this ridiculous mask so that I could actually get in this building to talk to you. Some people told me not to come tonight, wasn't going to make a difference, our voices aren't even heard anymore. What an extremely disappointing testimony from so many parents that I've talked to that you have been elected to represent. It's disgusting.
Ms. Sword, please do wear your mask properly, even as you're talking about it.
For God's sake.
Thank you.
This is what I'm talking about. I'm not affecting you. So I'm coming here tonight to talk about the mask requirement that's been on our children for over 400 days, 400 days. You've placed the burden of proof on parents when it should be on you to tell us specifically why they still need to wear them. I've emailed some of you. I haven't gotten any specifics back. They don't deserve this. You have the power tonight to remove these masks for the rest of the year. You have that power in this room. You're not going to do it, but you have that power. Our kids never asked for this, they don't deserve this, and it should not be their burden to carry because grown adults can't figure it out, especially with a 99.9% recovery rate and with the population that it barely affects. The damage that you've done to our children is irrevocable. The memories that they've lost because of your lack of common sense leadership are lost forever. They can't get this time back. We're the parents of these kids. We know when they're sick, we know when they have a fever, we know when they should go to school and when they shouldn't. They should have a choice. We should have a choice. You need to take these masks off our kids, it's been over 400 days. When people told me I shouldn't bother tonight because I wouldn't be heard, I thought about just not coming, but I can't stand silent anymore.
Please do wrap up your comments.
I'm here for my three. I'll wrap it up.
No, we're done.
No, 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 no. I didn't say three minutes, I'm here for my three children.
Okay, thank you, but your comments are wrapped up.
These three children need to know that I'm fighting for them and that I'm not going to sit quiet and comply to irrational mandates that aren't even legal. I'm here for the parents that are too scared to speak up, the teachers that are too frightened to lose their jobs.
Ms. Sword, I'm going to ask you to be escorted if you don't wrap it up.
I'm wrapping up.
Now.
And the children that don't have a voice.
Okay.
I was, we were told three minutes.
We were told two minutes.
I tried to wrap it up under two. I'm sorry.
Okay, I'm going to ask you to be escorted now. Thank you.
Yes, Your Honor.
Okay, and next up we will have Ms. Anna Dunn join us.
I'm a past Pooter High School and Lincoln Middle School student and I'm a current resident of Fort Collins. I recently read two Coloradoan opinion articles that both defended and challenged the SRO program and reflected the broader conversation. The Coloradoan article against SROs was filled with statistics and studies explaining that PSD underfunds its mental health services, falls under the recommended counselor-to-student ratio, and that students don't meaningfully, and that SROs don't meaningfully increase school safety against school shootings. The opinion article for SROs doesn't include any studies and the driving argument was that officers who work in schools are good people who want to help students. But the question isn't that are SROs good people? The question is, is having armed law enforcement in schools equitable and fair for all students? And the data says no, both nationally and at PSD. Being a good person shouldn't shield a career from being questioned about equity and bias. Furthermore, many people can fulfill the role of being kind and caring role models for students. Mental health professionals also care about the well-being of students but are uniquely qualified to handle things such as mental health crises, addiction issues, self-harm, or bullying. I appreciate that Fort Collins Police Chief Jeff Swaboda and the supervisor for the SRO program, Laura Lunsford, have recognized that changes need to be made and they started to change by creating the standard operating procedures. But why did it take public outcry for people to realize that students should always be read their Miranda rights? Why were encounters with SROs not documented until now? It is clear that the inside institutions planning these procedures need the outside input of activists and students and they should follow the CAC's recommendations. That's all, thank you.
Thank you for joining us. Okay, and next up we'll have Stephanie Richardson.
Hi, my name is Stephanie Richardson and I appreciate the pleasure of addressing you tonight. I want to talk to you about the SROs in the school and I know you've been hearing about this for a long time. I'm going to not bore you with statistics and data, I'm going to tell you a personal story from my experience. My experience is working with youth in the criminal justice system. So not everybody who gets caught up by the SRO and gets a ticket at school goes to DYC placement, but some do and I got to work with them. I spent 10 years doing that and three of those years here in this community. Now, the story I'm about to tell you is about a young man, I'm not going to use his real name, we'll say his name is Jaden. He was in a placement alternative to the DYC facility. He was in what's known as a group home. He was with other youth adjudicated for offenses away from his family, away from his community. Why were encounters with SROs not documented until now? It is clear that the inside institutions planning these procedures need the outside input of activists and students, and they should follow the CAC's recommendations. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Stephanie Richardson, and I appreciate the pleasure of addressing you tonight. I wanna talk to you about the SROs in the school, and I know you've been hearing about this for a long time. I'm gonna not bore you with statistics and data, I'm gonna tell you a personal story from my experience. My experience is working with youth in the criminal justice system. So not everybody who gets caught up by the SRO and gets a ticket at school goes to DYC placement, but some do, and I got to work with them. I spent 10 years doing that, and three of those years here in this community. Now, the story I'm about to tell you is about a young man, I'm not gonna use his real name, we'll say his name is Jaden. He was in a placement alternative to the DYC facility. He was in what's known as a group home. He was with other youth adjudicated for offenses away from his family, away from his community. Now imagine, you know, how lonely you feel there, how out of place you feel. You know, teenage years is already hard enough, but being away from your family is really hard. And so I got to develop a relationship with Jaden over eight months at his placement there, and from time to time, as expected, the kids would blow up. We'd have to do restraints and put our hands on them. Side note, if you're worried about SROs not being in the schools, being able to restrain your students, it's really easy to restrain someone under 18. As a 20-year-old, 120-pound woman, I was able to do it safely. And so Jaden, from time to time, would act up, and eventually he got sent back to the correction facility because he wasn't making progress. Now, the police brought him over there. Jaden was so upset that he kicked the windows out. The next time, police said, "You need to bring him." I brought him safely because I had a relationship with him. So that's what I want to impress upon you, is the relationship is important for changing youth behavior. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for joining us. And next up we'll have Ms. Dani Lawrence join us. Welcome.
Good evening. Thank you, Board members, for the opportunity. My name is Dani Lawrence. For three months, you've watched me struggle just to be heard by the Special Education Advisory Committee, and in that time, I've received radio silence from the board and the administration here. Just recently, I read in the Coloradoan that the dismissal of our previous superintendent may have been due to a lack of transparency. I'm here tonight to convey that those transparency issues run deeper than the superintendent. If the district's integrated service department can't update a website in 14 months in a viral pandemic that would impact medically complex children differently than general education students, and the committee is chosen by the director herself and CAC won't list meeting dates without making Colorado open records requests, or even take notes at its meetings so a community could interact with them, these all might be signs that in fact there's a culture of non-transparency, and it's pervasive in our district. Stating that CAC is designed after a state committee is fiction? Is there any chance you could help your voting constituents with this issue? In light of having no other way to interact about systemic issues facing special education, in our district, I've created a parent advisory group, independent of Pooter School District. IEP resources for Fort Collins parents can be found on Facebook, Instagram, Twitter, and a website coming by the end of the week. We have attorneys, advocates, community disability organizations, and medical professionals all willing to be a part of the solution. And I will make sure to come here, because this is the only option I have for communication, to update all of you regarding the needs of parents in the community, since the CAC committee is off limits, to parent participation by district design. Thank you for being the only group within Pooter School District that allows a chance for parents like me to be heard. Have a good evening.
Thank you for joining us. Okay, and next we'll have Silin Wellington join us. Welcome.
Good evening, and thank you for having me. My name is Silin Wellington, and my pronouns are they/them or he/him. I am speaking tonight to urge you not to renew SRO contracts. As a white student who attended Pooter School District schools for 13 years, I didn't have much interaction with student resource officers. The first time I talked to an SRO at length, I was leaving school to look for my friend who was actively suicidal. My friend's mom and a couple teachers already knew what was happening, and though Rocky had open campus, the officer intercepted me at the school exit. He towered over me, inquiring about my friend and taking notes as if she was the suspect of a crime. When I found my friend on a mountain trail later that day, three cop cars had gotten there first. My friend sat on a rock overlooking horsetooth, hunched forward, head between her knees, a half dozen police officers circling her. Of course, I was thankful she was alive, but it didn't feel like those officers were the right people to help. When I revisit this day, I think about how things might have been different, if there had been appointments available with a mental health counselor, if a social worker had intercepted me leaving school that day, or if my friend had been circled by therapists. Students like us did not need police officers in our schools. We needed counselors and more mental health resources. Security is an often cited reason by people defending SROs, but studies show having armed officers in school does little to deter school shootings. The perceived safety of schools by a white student majority should not be prioritized over the actual safety of marginalized students, especially when BIPOC students are disciplined at disproportionate rates compared to their white peers. If you instead spend your SRO budget on expanding mental health resources for students, our community would be much better off. I urge you not to renew SRO contracts. Thank you for having me.
Thank you for joining us. Okay, and next we'll have Ms. Kristin Hyppner join us. Welcome.
I'm reading tonight on behalf of Rory King, who cannot be here. My name is Kristin Hyppner. I have been following the school justice PSD campaign closely for the last year, and it feels significant, after a year of organizing, listening, and learning, to be here when we answer the question, "What will we do?" I hope that the board answers with integrity and trust in the research that has been conducted, and most importantly, in the experiences of parents, students, and alumni who have had the most involvement with police. I hope that your decision will be to move forward with informed, compassionate, and just action. We know that police in schools today target, control, and remove more students of color than their white counterparts, as they were intended to, as policing in schools and the accompanying justification of the delinquency of students of color, delinquency of students of color expanded in the late 1950s during the end of the Jim Crow era in order to maintain a legal way for white institutions to exert control over people of color. Despite our wishes, research shows that policing in PSD is no exception. The policing in schools additionally has a long history of targeting disabled and LGBTQ students, particularly those students of color, who are similarly stigmatized, separated, and pushed out of classrooms in schools and into the juvenile justice system. Today, disabled students, who make up 8% of PSD students, make up 18% of referrals to the police. LGBTQ youth make up 15% of all youth nationally in juvenile detention centers. I don't believe this has to be where we are, and I believe that we have the community resources financially and within each other to choose something different. In order to begin to transform the system to align with our desire for an equitable and inclusive experience for all, I urge this board to vote in support of the CAC recommendations, to create a liaison outside the building to provide the needed level of security and remove armed officers in schools. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us. Okay, and next we'll have Mr. Israel.
Israel Herrera Santos, thank you again for having me again tonight. I'm actually here to read another statement from someone who couldn't be here. It reads, "Hello, I am sorry I am unable to be with you in person, but I wanted to make a statement to lend my support to the reform initiative regarding the continuation of SROs in PSD. I raised two children who spent all of their school years in PSD, so have a personal knowledge of our schools, and I'm invested in making sure they are the best that they can be. As a mother, I feel it is vitally important that schools be communities of safety and care for all students. Most particularly, as a community, it is important that we first and foremost keep the needs of our most vulnerable and undeserved students in mind when making decisions. To that end, I am supportive of the CAC recommendation to provide a liaison outside the school buildings, which will provide some measure of safety without creating a hostile or contentious environment for students of color, students with disabilities, LGBTQ and I students, and others who may have had negative experiences with police. I also support the CAC recommendation to not have armed officers in schools. These changes will help address the many concerns brought to the school board from our students and parents of color. It is imperative we listen carefully and well so that we do not continue to perpetuate a climate of fear, but rather one of care for all members of our community. Thank you so much for all your thoughtful consideration," and this was written by Claire Coop, a PSD parent and Fort Collins resident. "And from mine, I just wanna thank you for being so bold. It's been a long year, and then it's gonna, the fight's gonna continue to get, be long and be hard. So, thank you for being bold, and I wish you luck. So, thank you. Bye."
Thank you for joining us. Okay, and next we have Renee Trujillo to join us. Welcome.
Hello, everyone. My name is Renee Trujillo. Okay, so, the actions of this board in considering alternatives to the status quo are historical and bold, but you're not alone. I ask that you please watch the Hoots video that was shared with you by our facilitation team, Civic Canopy, and here's why. Helping out our teens in schools, or Hoots, provides onsite integrated healthcare clinics and tragedy response support to a number of high schools in the Eugene-Springfield area. Each week, teams consisting of a medic, either a nurse or an EMT, and a crisis worker with years of experience in the medical health field, visit schools to offer walk-in clinics. Hoots is primarily staffed by and born from the work that the Kahoots Mobile Crisis Response Program provides the larger community. Hoots made a statement in support of removing SROs from one of their local school districts, and they put a lot of thought and energy into reasons why they supported that decision. SROs are a relatively new invention, and they haven't been in schools for all that long. One of the arguments they have seen come up in a lot of places that support SROs is that they are counselors, is that they are supportive for students. But in terms of spending what little money public schools get and spending it well, that money goes a lot further when it can be given to local social services that are then able to provide services in schools. You see more importance, or you see more support for students, you see more presentations and more support for staff. Economically, it's a really smart choice, and moving away from folks whose role is punitive in schools is really beneficial when we are talking about our children and how we want to treat them and support them. Hoots is a non-punitive program and is learning about what makes students feel safe and that they belong in school, as opposed to creating an atmosphere for how do we punish and discipline students for things. People in their community are seeing a need for that after SROs, and it's a cool reframe on school culture can be. And if you take SROs out of schools, suddenly people are interested in talking about that. So, thank you so much.
Thank you for joining us. Okay, and we have finally this evening, Mr. Ryan Barone to join us. Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Ryan Barone, and I am a parent of a seven-year-old who goes to Linton Elementary. I will say she has no problem wearing masks and her classmates don't either. I, I've been emailing, I'm around the topic of SROs, and I'm really grateful to have the opportunity to speak with you today. Thank you to Izzy, who read my statement last month, and I'm glad to be here in person today. This is not an easy decision, I'm on the SRO contract, so I think I can see the complexity and the challenges inherent there, and I think that you did some good by buying yourselves time in terms of thinking about it for a year. In that time, and I've been researching, and I know you have as well, schools like Minnesota Public Schools, Oakland Public Schools, Madison in Wisconsin, and even DPS have made some progress. And so there are blueprints, and there are actions for either incrementally or completely removing SROs from the schools, and that's the decision I plead with you to make today. I think we should at least follow the Community Advisory Council's recommendations around known armed officers in schools, and appreciated the young person earlier saying this is a relatively new phenomenon and one that we can imagine in new and different ways, given the moment that we're in. I guess I'd like to leave you with this. I'm sure, like everybody in this room, have been deeply impacted by the recent murders of black and brown people in this country, and in particular, Makia Bryant. I think a lot about the foster youth, we're foster parents, and I had a 16-year-old in our home, and I think of my daughter when she is 16, and if she is at Fort Collins High School, like I think she will be in a few years, what would happen if she got in a confrontation with an armed police officer, just like Makia Bryant did? I don't know what would happen if there was an SRO in Fort Collins High School in that same situation, and we don't know what would happen if there was. But what we do know is if there's a police officer with a firearm and has the ability to engage in lethal force, the possibility of having that same outcome happen could happen again, and it could happen again in our schools. If there's only non-lethal weapons available, or methods available, we know the outcome may have been different. I'm really inspired by the young people who have spoken today, and I'd encourage you all to listen as you have with humility and as I do, as I try to look, grow, and learn and think differently about these really complicated topics. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for joining us. Okay, and for the board, that's the last of the community comment, and that'll bring us to item 4.0, which is Board Topics and Committee Reports. So I would open it up to board members who have anything to speak about, and Naomi, go first, please.
Thank you. I have three things to share tonight. I was able to make a visit to Fossil Ridge High School. Again, thank you so much, Julie, for allowing me into your building again, and thank you for making Brad and Ryan available to show me around. Phase four seems to be going very well, and I was actually there and was able to escort Brad and Ryan to a classroom when they had to inform some students that they were close contacts and needed to be picked up from school and be remote for a while. It was a very smooth situation. The students, of course, were disappointed because they wanted to be in school, but they recognized the importance of making that switch and, and were just excited to get back as soon as they could. So thank you for allowing me that opportunity. I was also able to visit a class with Mr. Donovan and speak about our role on the school board and what it means to be politicians. So that was a lot of fun, and I think that we all look forward to the opportunity to spending more time in school, hopefully in the fall, when things are a lot better with the virus. I was also able to participate in Polaris's senior presentations this afternoon and got to see several students culminating project of their expeditionary learning experience. And I can tell you that I think we're gonna be okay, because these kids had great, great things to say about their experience and a beautiful vision for the future, and that, to me, coming out of this year and being able to end, end their, their experience in that way was a beautiful thing, and I think that a lot of our students are closing out their educational experiences either as seniors or just closing out this year and moving forward in a very positive way, so I look forward to that as well. DJ and I are in the midst of gathering a student voice, because again, the students are who we are serving here. We want students to be a part of our Student Advisory Council here at the district level. You have seen this advertisement in Great Happens Here on Facebook from the school district's Facebook page, as well as some individual high schools have been posting it to their own social media sites. So, the application is a form that you fill out. It is going to be open for about three more weeks. We currently have five responders. We are hoping to get broad representation from every school, and we encourage any students who are currently 8th through 11th grade to fill out this form and be a part of bringing your voice to the district in the fall. Thank you.
Thank you, Naomi. Rob?
Yeah, so I have a couple of things with respect to the new superintendent. The first is to make sure that everybody knows that we do have, in fact, a signed contract with our new superintendent, and Brian will be coming full-time July 1st and may visit before then. More details TBD on that. The other piece is sort of a board thing that we want, certainly want to talk about in public here, and that is that we have been, if you've been following along, we've been working on the idea of a new superintendent evaluation instrument and process. DJ and Carolyn have done a lot of work on that. I joined recently to help with that a little bit, and we are now at a place where the board has agreed that we have something that we want to talk to Brian about. So, the next step will be, I think DJ and I will contact Brian and share that with him and get his initial feedback on that. And as that process moves along, we'll certainly bring that to the attention of the whole board, and then eventually, once we're in agreement, if you will, once Brian and the board as a whole... once Brian and the board as a whole are in agreement with what that process should look like and what the instrument should look like, that will form a piece of his, an addendum, really, to the contract that we have already agreed on. The existing contract says, basically, by August, we'll agree on what that addendum should look like. So, that's A, good news about our superintendent is coming, and B, progress on how we're gonna work with him in terms of evaluation going forward. So, just wanted to make sure everybody was aware of that.
Thank you, Rob, and thank you, DJ, Carolyn, and Rob, and your staff that helped, including yourself, Todd, that was much appreciated. So, and just to be clear, if there are any comments, they need to get to these members before they go too much further. So, everybody's had a chance to read that at this point. So, okay, DJ?
Yeah, so I got a few from our Legislative Committee. Basically, the last time we met, a lot of the conversation was over the long bill, which is being, taking up a lot of time right now. But there has been a bill that kept hearing was coming, was the K-12 Education Accountability System Performance Audit. So, that did get introduced this week, and so that'll be something interesting to look at and see if we can get that through, and they would actually take the time to evaluate that system and look at it. And I'd also like to welcome HD, House District 53, has a new representative, elect or appointed, Andrew Basennecker, was appointed, yeah, it was this week. Time flies. And so, welcome aboard. He has been someone that we have had conversations with in the past about educational issues. So, it's nice to have someone that already has some of that communication with us and talking about that. So, that is great. And then, the third thing I had is I wanted to bring up again the, when we were doing research for the Student Advisory Council, talking to Brighton, we learned, I learned about their linkage dinners, which I think is just such a fabulous idea that I really want to make sure that we would have time to sit down and decide if that's something we would like to do, because it will take time to set up and get going. But again, this is an opportunity for the board to sit down with different groups and have kind of a informal conversations. The ones that I was really excited about that they had talked about that they do is with the principals. They do it, they do it with their Student Advisory Council also. They do it with some of their parent groups. They do it with their elected officials. So, I think that it is something that would be extremely beneficial for us and be able to get that communication and that, really, talk to all the stakeholders really well and all the different people out there. But I do realize it would take some effort, and so we would have to work about trying to plan that and get that set up, if that's something we wanted to do in August. I think it would be a great opportunity, too, with our new superintendent, to be able to give them, him, an opportunity to meet these people in another way again. So, if this is something we want to do, I'd like to, you know, bring it to you guys and see how you want to do it on our leadership communication. So, that is something, I know there's a ton going on, but we got a plan ahead a little bit on that, so I just wanted to bring that up.
Thank you. DJ, are there any other comments on that linkage dinner? Is there, it seemed like something we should pursue then, or? Okay, all right, we'll get that reviewed. So, okay, other comments? Go ahead, Kristen.
I just wanted to mention that Rob and I, along with a lot of staff, attended the Pruder School District, the county and the city meeting that happened on the 23rd. And just some, two really in-depth discussions. One was on new federal monies and the various money that we are, the county, the city, and the district have received and what mutual priorities we have and seeing how we could maybe, you know, make that money work harder for those three entities. And then the other in-depth was the hiring. So, it was, we just, we're looking at diversity in hiring and seeing if there was something that we could do. First of all, all three hiring groups have been working together, which has been great to increase their diversity in hiring practices and learnings, but seeing if there was something that we could do there as well. So, I just wanted to bring that up.
Wonderful. I know you're likely to be getting new city council members joining that team. Do you guys, yeah, okay?
Tonight?
Tonight, as of tonight. Very good. All right. Other board reports or comments, questions? Okay, I gotta tell you, I don't have anything to add either, so thankfully. Okay, that'll bring us to item 5.0, which is the Consent Agenda. Would any board members like to pull anything from consent this evening? Okay, seeing none, I'd take a motion for the Consent Agenda. Go ahead, Nate.
I move that the board approve and adopt the recommended actions for the items on the Consent Agenda.
Thank you. Do I have a second? I do, from Kristen Draper. And shall I take a roll call vote for that, please?
DJ Anderson?
Aye.
Nate Donovan?
Aye.
Kristen Draper?
Aye.
Kristoff Fev?
Aye.
Naomi Johnson?
Aye.
Rob Pedersen?
Aye.
Carolyn Reed?
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0.
Excellent. Okay, that brings us to item 6.0, which are the Work Session Topics. And first up this evening is 6.1, the Community Advisory Council. So, Dr. Lambert, I'm gonna turn that over to you to introduce.
Thank you, President Fev. This evening, we are joined by PSD Director of Language, Culture, and Equity, Mr. John McKay, who will introduce Bill Fulton from the Civic Canopy, and Johanna Uyoa, and Erin Wilson, representing our Community Advisory Council. Our guests this evening will take terms presenting information about the Community Advisory Council's recommendation related to school resource officers in PSD. Other representatives from the Civic Canopy will join the meeting online to address any questions the board may have. John McKay, I'm turning it over to you.
Directors, it's great to be with you this evening. So, I have the pleasure of being able to introduce a group of stakeholders and facilitators that have been working with us for quite some time through the process of talking about the issue related to school resource officers. So, to my right, I have Bill Fulton. He is the Executive Co-Director of the Civic Canopy, which was the firm that we hired to facilitate this process. To his right, we have Ms. Erin Wilson. She is a senior at Fort Collins High School. She is a future CSU RAM and is going to be studying music education. So, we've been very thankful for her participation on the CAC. And then to her right, we have Johanna Uyoa Geron, and she is the Program Director for the BIPOC Alliance and has been a CAC representative as well. So, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Erin to get us started this evening.
It should light up green when it's good. Okay. All righty.
Welcome.
I just wanted to outline that my hope for tonight is that I can, or we can express and convey the way we felt at the end of our process, except, of course, in a more concise way. We came to agreement on over...
Okay. Hello, there we go. We came to agreement on over 50 points throughout our process, which was very incredible. However, the main thing that I was impressed upon was that everybody agreed that there is some change that needs to happen, and it's up to the board to decide which way to go on that. But, yeah.
The light, is it working? Yes, it is working. Thank you so much for having us here. I really appreciate your time and willingness to really look at this issue. I think my hope for tonight is also, and counterpoint to my fear, one of the fears that I have, and it's not just mine, but some of the members of this committee and this group, is that nothing will happen. That you will get this report, you will read it, it will go into a drawer, or there will be excuses for changing administration and needing more time to do anything about this. So, I do represent kind of the committee in the hope that something actually happens and that we don't have to wait another year of study or prolonging things that need to happen. And I hope we're here to answer the questions that you have. We hope to also represent the CAC. So, we're not here representing our views or our own standards or our opinions while we were going through this process, but we really try, we're gonna try to convey the CEC process and how that took place. Next slide, please.
All righty, so for tonight, we're gonna go through, starting with the change in approach, which, or charge in approach. Basically, what we were presented with at the beginning, and then move on to a vision of school safety. We kind of put together what we idealize as what safety looks like in our schools. We found some controversy in our process and found that we were kind of going at it from a more pro-con, pro-con vision, and so we changed that to managing polarities. And then we moved on to figuring out what the principles of what using law enforcement in our school district should look like, and of course, where they should and shouldn't be working. And finally, our implementation of how that will look like. Yeah. Next slide?
How's that? Is that better? Great, thank you. So, just to set the charge for the council, when Civic Canopy joined in January, we knew that we were already, you know, it was a program already in progress. And if you animate the slide, please, to the next thing, we took as our kind of focal point, the first paragraph on your website, which looks very far away right now, but it really stipulated that focus on the SRO question. Later on down the website, if you animate it one more time, was a number of topic areas that really were what brought people to the table. Questions about the school-to-prison pipeline, research on the effectiveness things. So, we just wanted to acknowledge that when we stepped in and began running the meetings in January, there were already expectations that many of the people that had been working on it for a while had developed, and so we had to kind of course correct and figure out a way, how do we accommodate this broader vision that brought people to the table with the mandate that we feel is on your shoulders to make decisions about the SRO specifically? So, you'll see in the way we designed the process, an attempt to do both. We feel like we accomplished the second one remarkably with the group, and the first one got a lot of progress made. But it's important to know that as people talk about frustrations with the process, this is kind of a point to understand in the development of it. Erin, if there's commentary on that, too?
Yeah, when the Civic Canopy came to work with us, I felt like their reframing personally was pretty helpful. In the fall, it felt like we were kind of being a little too concise with it. So, taking a back, taking a step back and focusing on the bigger picture, because there's so many things that go into this issue, was really helpful.
What I have to add to this is you will hear from perhaps some of the members of the Community Advisory Council that there was some frustration about the change of focus, what it seems like to be that change of focus, and second, the lack of data. But I think it's important to note that the lack of data also came from the lack of existing data. So, one of the things that we found is that there is no evaluation of the SRO per se. So, we were asking for a lot of this data, and throughout the process, we understood that thus has not been made. We don't have evaluation in place to know the program is working or not. The other piece that I think is important to talk about the process is, this is a really big issue. I don't think, I fail to say that the time that we had was not enough to talk about a school-to-prison pipeline with the amount of data that we needed to really dive into, like article reviews and things like that. We had many members who, this is our volunteer time, and we were meeting for many weeks and looking at different things. So, there were pieces that we were able to do with a lot of time, and there are pieces that we hope the school district continues to be involved in, and the staff and administrators continue to be involved in that has to do with the school-to-prison pipeline. So, the frustrations that we shared as members of the CEC had to do with those points that I think is important for you to know.
Okay, next slide, please. So, knowing that, as policymakers, oftentimes as recommendations are developed, depending upon how people feel about those recommendations, they'll want to know about the process that led to that. So, we wanted to give you kind of a high-level overview of the thought process in the design, if you don't mind animating. Next. As I mentioned, when we arrived, there was a kind of pent-up appetite and interest in saying, we should begin with a comprehensive vision of safety. So, what we developed is what we called an MVP, or Minimum Viable Product, is how quickly could we get that comprehensive view, knowing you could spend two years doing that? Could we take a few sessions to just tease out that vision of safety? And that, you'll, if you animate it one more time, please, Erin will speak a little bit to what that comprehensive vision is. That's beyond the scope of this focal point of this. You've got decisions to make on SRO, but we wanted you to know there's some good work done on thinking broadly about what safety should look like. Then we backed up and said, well, what's the current state related to SROs? If you animate the next slide, or animate, there we go. And this is what Johanna was talking about. It's hard to get a full grasp. SROs look differently in different schools, but we did the best we could to kind of get a sense of what the state of affairs was. And that was looking at the different roles, the SOPs, how people's experiences were playing out. You can animate it a few more times here, and we'll fill in the middle of the slide. And then finally, developing these recommendations. How would we go from the current state closer to that vision that people have articulated for a comprehensive view of school safety, knowing the SRO question is only one piece of that? I think you can go to the next slide. And then, finally, sorry. Sorry for all the animation, whoever's kind enough to advance these. And then the last process question, again, just the theory here is a pretty straightforward strategic planning framework, beginning with that end in mind, looking at the current state, exploring alternatives. We tried to look at different models, different questions. What was at the heart of it? We'll talk in a minute about this question of managing polarities. Once we had that wide range of possibilities, we began to narrow in. We'll walk you through the consensus process, a really rigorous, and I have to just commend the CAC for its patience and willingness to continually update and revise their own decisions, reaching final agreement at that last meeting. We had 11 meetings between January and April with the group. They had more in the fall. But that's the journey we went on. Next slide, please? And so, knowing, whenever you hear the word, "we reached consensus", it's helpful to spell that out a little bit, so you know the kind of rigor we tried to apply to that. We used a common technique called fist-to-five voting that allows people to signal the level of support for a given proposal on a continuum fist-to-five. Fist meaning I do not support. One through five successive levels of support. That difference between zero and one is the critical limit. So, when someone says, "I cannot support this", the process stops. We engage in discussion, what would it take to move to make that proposal more amenable? The group extended a period of time trying to find that common ground. But between one and five, it just means that someone on the one end might have concerns, but they're not willing to block it. They can live with that decision. So, when we talk about consensus, know that there's a range of support in that, down to almost a granular level using these Excel spreadsheets. If you animate one time here, you can see each person had their own sub-sheet to enter their data and feedback in. Animate one more time. They would evaluate each of these extended number of recommendations that we'll walk through and animate one more time. We would then see the aggregate input masked a little bit. So, there was some anonymity, but obviously, in a group that got to know each other, it was, people felt free to speak on it. And then we could see the average level of support for that decision. And we would use this on the fly to update when we saw any zeros. They would highlight in red, and we would move over and say, all right, who would like to speak to that? What are those concerns? How can we address those? Is there a way to find common ground? And to the group's credit, when there wasn't, nobody seemed to feel compelled to find it. We'll show one example where we simply reached an impasse, and people saw that differently. And I feel like that's a credible comment, kind of commentary on the group's feelings about it. Johanna, Erin, anything to add on that one? I don't know if that was just my slide alone, but?
I think I can, I think overall, what you're gonna find is a group of people where nobody left super happy about the end result. And I think that's a good indicator, because some of the group, some of the members of the group felt very strongly that police officers shouldn't be at all at the schools. And some of the members felt very strongly that they couldn't think or imagine a school without police officers in them. And both of these groups left unhappy. So, I think this consensus really demonstrates how much, how hard it was for us to come to either a middle ground or a place that we can see each other and see the humanity. to either a middle ground or a place that we can see each other and see the humanity in each other. So, you're not gonna see a group of people who are like, "This was the best. This represents absolutely exactly what I wanted." I don't think you're gonna find somebody in that CAC committee that feels that way. And I think that's a good thing. I think that's part of sitting down and having conversations, and now it's up to you to make that decision. But know about the process. That's something that, this represents that, that tension.
Next slide, please.
Alrighty, so, I wanted to highlight this first point here, the supportive school culture. So, all of us can agree that safety is something we want in our schools. And as a student, a supportive school culture is where it starts. That's the foundation of it. I would advocate that more could be done in PSD as far as this. As a member of the LGBT community and a student in PSD for 12 years, I can say that there were maybe two or three days where we talked about LGBTQ history or the community in general. And this, and while I was comfortable learning about my community for myself, I knew that my cisgendered heterosexual classmates were not. Sorry. And this led to lack of respect in some cases, lack of understanding from those classmates, and ultimately, a feeling of lack of support. And when you don't feel supported, there's instances where you don't feel safe. So, that's really where supportive school culture comes in to play, especially for me, and that's only one example. But, yeah, SROs are kind of a little further down the line, so I wanted to highlight that.
Thank you, Erin. Yeah, supportive school culture, really, in terms of vision of safety, we wanted you to really narrow it down and zero down in marginalized communities throughout all of this. So, I think there is enough data and research and articles that can show how little attention there is based on marginalized communities, including BIPOC communities, LGBTQ+, not dominant language within a school district. So, we wanted it a place that feels safe to all, and that's a very tricky thing to accomplish, and it's a very tricky thing to accomplish is if intentionally, you're not looking at marginalized communities. So, that's something that we really talked through the CAC. And I have to say, I don't think there was one member that did not agree how important is for children to feel safe so they can learn. There was nobody in this group that said, "I don't want that. I don't think that's important. I don't think that's relevant." Everybody was part of this group, thinking about how to make this vision of safety. We talk about direct prevention, so the students have inclusive, accessible, and equitable access to safety. And what does that mean? And how do we ensure that people feel safe and that marginalized communities also feel safe? Preparedness and response, that we have, that teachers, staff, and students are protected from harm that originates either inside or outside of school. Recovery and accountability. So, do we have the necessary resources to heal and to have a supportive school culture without a stigma? And what that does look like? And how can we measure that? Those things are important for this vision of safety. And something that was, I want to say, a point that we all agree on is, how do we evaluate SROs' roles and responsibilities? But I think I'm going ahead of myself, so, next, please.
So, that was the vision. Again, it was done over the course of just a couple of meetings, and the fact that they were able to reach such agreements so quickly, I think speaks highly of what a compelling vision people have, and that there's a lot of common ground when you ask at that high level. As we got to the question of SROs, that's where the kind of tensions began to develop. And as Erin had mentioned earlier, it quickly became easy to fall into pro-con positions on SROs, and it made it more difficult to look at the data through fresh eyes if you'd already kind of decided which side of that pro-con. So, what we realized is that as we framed this as a managing of polarities framework, the difference is that you acknowledge we're balancing two competing concerns that are important. One is the presence of law enforcement can be an asset in times of need. They have unique skills and tools to apply. There's a value in the school for those, and there's an upside to that. But that can be overplayed, and it can cause some downsides as well. Same thing, as you remove law enforcement from schools, there's some upsides in reducing the amount of tension and stress people experience that are looking at armed officers, and you raise risks of not having them there should you need them. Many debates, if you want to animate the next slide, will focus on the strengths of my position and the weaknesses of the opposing position, and so, it was important. Animate one more time. Next time, I won't do animations, I promise. And so, you end up in these cross-arguments, where we're not quite listening to each other. We're looking at the strengths of our own and the weaknesses. But as the group really considered that tension, how, they're making decisions on behalf of the whole district. How would you advise and guide, knowing there's values to law enforcement in the right places, and limitations and downsides when their presence is overused? What that translated into was a set of principles that the board could think about and utilize in trying to find that balance. So, this next slide is how to kind of utilize the polarity management model in an active way of having a set of guiding principles.
If you don't mind actually going back to the last slide real quick. Thank you. All right, so, one thing that really stood out to me in this managing polarities part is that there is an existence of externalities, and that might make it a little easier to conceptualize this. For example, to one person, law enforcement in a school can create peace of mind for should crisis occur, they'll be safe, and that system is working for that individual. And therefore, they'll have positive experiences with an SRO. However, there are outside factors that present in the form of externalities from this law enforcement presence, which cause stress and trauma responses in other individuals. While these feelings aren't the externality, the existence of negative experiences are, and that's why we're addressing this. But in observing managing polarities, we found more common ground on instances where law enforcement should and shouldn't be involved, and, yeah. Next slide now. Thank you.
So, these are the principles to guide the use of law enforcement in schools. So, we went through different things, we went through different things that we thought SROs should be involved or not within the school. And we think law enforcement should be used only in specific circumstances, and I want to make sure that this point is very clear. So, one of the things that was kind of a shock to us was the lack of uniformity on understanding what SROs actually do. So, the contract is really loose. We don't have really clear expectations of what they need to do. There are not evaluation markers to know if they're doing what they're supposed to be doing or not. And then, when we brought staff and when we brought SROs themselves, everybody seems to have a different understanding of what they are supposed to do. So, each school kind of uses their SROs as they seem fit, and that was concerning to everybody in the CAC. So, we want to know when they are used or utilized, that there are specific circumstances, and that they are very clear, and that has to do with threats of safety. That law enforcement should be used as a last resort. So, I think everybody agree on that point, including the officers that came to our meeting. So, yeah, that they shouldn't be used as the first point of reference for disciplinary actions or mental health instances that you need support. They should be used as a last resort. The other thing was that relationship between schools and law enforcement can improve how well issues are resolved. So, a lot of staff members said, when they have a relationship with the SRO, it's easier to navigate some of the instances when they have to call the police. And the teachers and the personnel should understand how to be trained on this dynamic. So, it doesn't mean because I have a good relationship with the SRO, I'm gonna call the SRO all the time, or every time I have an issue with a student, or shouldn't be that way. And the other point that was kind of, one of those tension moments was, should the school pay for having a good relationship with SROs? Is that part of the way we should be managing our dollars in terms of helping the relationship with anybody in the community? Mental health, socio-emotional, and behavioral health support should be increased and used as to-go response in schools. I don't know if you want to say anything about that, Erin?
Yeah, the one thing I wanted to highlight on that is, not everybody probably understands the relationship between law enforcement, schools, and mental health. Right now, law enforcement are currently the only ones who are authorized to sign off on mental health holds in PSD. And while there are laws that restrict who can do so, there are other high-stakes instances where additional mental health professionals and resources would be better than having an armed officer deal with it first, so.
Yeah, we talked about how the presence of a police officer can be very triggering for marginalized communities. I'm not saying all marginalized communities, but very specific, and how having that presence can actually exacerbate mental health issues. So, what can we do? What are other things that can be done? And I think you can have a very good conversation about how other places deal with, with mental health and socio-emotional needs that don't need a police officer to be involved in those. Next one.
Alrighty, so, this is the points where we agreed, where law enforcement, it's acceptable to be used in schools. Of course, an emergency response to violence inside of a school, weapon use, serious drug sales offenses and investigations, emergency response to violence outside of school grounds but involving students, investigations with crimes with a victim, sexual assault, implementation of risk and threat assessments. These are usually for students who... Sorry, I, my mind is not working right now. Yeah, if someone could help me out real quick.
Where are you at?
The risk and threat assessment part, yeah.
Oh, if deemed necessary? So, that's another point that needs to be clarified. When it's necessary, who makes the determination? Who makes that call and when? Initial emergency planning and implementation when called for? Missing children runaway investigations and corresponders' checks, home visits, welfare checks. And again, throughout all of this, like you see this plus, is that an accountability? So, one of the biggest holes that we saw throughout this process is the lack of data and the lack of accountability. So, throughout all of that list, you need to have a clear understanding of when, who, and how, and how often are police officers called, by whom, what are the check and balances for that process to take place? And broader training. So, it seems like there is maybe a need for more training in what it means to, especially a school-to-prison pipeline, what it means for BIPOC community members and children. So, teachers and staff are very well-trained when they're gonna make a decision to bring a police officer for anything that they deem necessary or not. And the other part of that and accountability that we talked about was, you can go online and you can find easy information about reading scores, math scores, discipline, a bunch of different things. The school district does a really good job of having a bunch of data that you can look at, especially if you're gonna decide where to put your kid at school. But when it comes to SROs and police encounters, it's super difficult. Like, you require hours to be able to find that information, and that we found as a committee, that that's unacceptable. We want to know what are the schools who are calling the police more often, who are the schools that are calling the police more often, and BIPOC children and BIPOC families, LGBTQ+? That information should be as accessible as reading scores. It's as important to us. Next.
Alrighty, so, these are places where law enforcement should not be in schools. So, we actually had, during our talks with the SRO supervisors and such, they agreed on many of these points, especially minor drug offenses, vaping in schools, administration should be dealing with that. Serious drug use, substance disorder, that should be a mental health professional or healthcare professional. On that first bullet point, assistance with teaching as a guest speaker in class, this isn't a, like, written in stone, they can't, but it should not be a typical thing. There should be an option for students to opt out if they're not comfortable with a law enforcement officer speaking that day. There should be an alternative assignment for those students, so they're not missing out on the content. Sorry, went a little out of order there. But the other one I wanted to hit on was building relationships with students. While it's great to idealize law enforcement officers in schools knowing every student, it's not possible, and that's not what they're here for, and it shouldn't be their one goal at the end of the day, to be building relationships with students. And emergency drills with students present, again, that law enforcement presence can cause trauma and stress for students. Some of the administration that were, that was in the CAC with us, agreed that these drills can be performed without the law enforcement there, as long as they talk before, like, how it should go down and whatever. And if law enforcement needs the building to do their own training, they can do it on a weekend or a time when students aren't present in the building. Do you have anything to add?
So, on this one, the first one, I know the first one, if you read that sentence by itself, you're like, it can be shocking, but the way we were thinking is, should we have a contract that pays for these things? And the answer for the committee was no. So, you have other professionals that come to the schools to talk. You have nurses, you have doctors, or you have lawyers, and the school district doesn't have to create a contract for each one of those professionals to come and talk in class and pay for it. So, we feel that it should be like any other professional that the teacher wants to invite. We shouldn't have to pay for that kind of presentation. The other piece was questioning students under 18 without the presence of a parent. That was a very big point for us. We don't feel that that is okay, it's against the rights, and parents should be notified if the police officer is gonna be present, and if the information that is presented can be used in court, it shouldn't happen without the parent or the legal guardian, either present or giving the okay for that to happen. There was a lot of questions about how do we make that happen? How can we, and that's your job, so we think that that would be great to go through some of that and figure out how that happens. That was not the, part of the preview of this committee to figure it out. Mental health holes, there is other possibilities to make this happen without having to an officer, a police officer, to do this. There can be colocation of therapists or psychiatrists that can be paid for other providers. So, there are many different things to think about how these things can be happening that doesn't have to be a police officer. Next. Implementation of recommendations. So, this is the part that I think caused the most tension within the committee. I think, like I said, many of us felt very strongly about the recommendation one way, and others felt very strongly about the recommendation in a different way. So, I think Bill did a good job explaining how we came to consensus, but really consensus meant is, we voted, and here are the votes in terms of what that implementation looked like. We have 11 members of the CAC, and I think if you need to know, like, where those fail, like, in terms of the one to five, you can ask Bill. I don't have that information with me. But believe the role of the law enforcement can be fully implemented without the SROs present in school. To reduce the likely call-help potential traumatic experiences for students, the PSD SRO model needs to shift to a response model when law enforcement is not embedded on campus. One option to explore could be for law enforcement officer to fulfill the roles outlined in their report, but act more as a liaison to a school. Officers will be assigned to patrol areas adjacent to the designated school to reduce response time. response time when called to the school to address issues consistent with the consensus recommendation. Um, so of course, that will take many challenges in your part and figure out how to implement this or not. And so 11 of us within the spectrum to one to five felt that this was, um, a, an option. And four members felt strongly against that implementation. They felt that SROs should remain embedded in schools, that they should be there in case of, uh, threats of violence. They were very concerned about safety, and they agree that disproportionately, they did agree that disproportionality of BIPOC students are referred to law enforcement is a large concern. So I want you to know that regardless whether people were in the, SRO should stay in school or SRO should not be within the schools, the entire committee was very concerned with the data that we saw about disproportionality of BIPOC students, um, being referred to law enforcement. This is a concern of the entire committee. And, you know, one of the tensions was, is it the chicken or the egg? So there was a lot of, is it the police who's causing this disproportionality of BIPOC being involved with, uh, law enforcement? Or is it the staff that's creating this? And both staff and police officers seem to have a different idea, but the reality remains that disproportionality of BIPOC students being referred to law enforcement exists within PSD. So that, that's something that we all wanted to make sure people knew, that it was important to us. It is super concerning to us. Thank you.
Alrighty, I wanted to thank everybody again for, um, having us tonight. Um, and after spending the past eight months developing this recommendation, I'm hoping that this is a catalyst for change, regardless of what that might end up looking like. Um, I am very encouraged by, um, the people I've been able to work with over the past eight months, and it's been incredible to be in this experience, um, as a future educator. Uh, as, even though I'm graduating in less than a month now, I, this is still an issue that will, um, affect me in the future. So I am very thankful for my experience on this committee.
Uh, I also wanted to thank you for giving us this opportunity to have these really hard, um, conversations. And I will stop, like, representing the, the CAC right now and just speak from myself. As a woman of color who has two very little children in PSD, this is very important to me. This is something that we have to deal every day and is how, what will happen when we encounter a police officer, and the stakes are very high for people of color in this nation. So I really hope you take this as serious as we did over the last eight months, that you take the time that you need and that you make decisions, that this doesn't stay, like I said at the beginning, in a drawer, and that you're not afraid to make changes. You ask kids every day to learn and to do things differently, and I hope you can take kind of the same, the same things that you're asking from kids, that you look at, uh, we don't have a way to evaluate this program that we have spent a lot of money on, will we do that for our kids in any other instance? And then to use your imagination, what are other things that you can use and look at to provide safety for everyone in the school district, not just certain, uh, community members? So thank you so much, and I wanna thank everybody in the school, uh, district, I wanna thank Civic Canopy, and just for, uh, kind of giving us a space that we could talk, that we can have some conversations. It was very difficult for some of us, I think for everybody in the committee was very difficult. But I wanna thank the opportunity that you gave us to have these conversations, and we will be watching, we will be, uh, very close to know what happens next. So thank you.
Okay, thank you, uh, to each of you for joining us this evening, and Erin for some of your courageous comments this evening. Um, and John, I, I think it behooves us to thank you for your part in how much work you put into doing what has turned into quite a tough thing. Um, I'd like to open it up to board members to ask any clarifying questions you may have for this group. DJ?
It's not as much clarifying as, as I really wanna take the moment to thank you. Uh, I, I cannot thank everyone enough for, uh, taking the time and being vuln- vulnerable to sit down and have those conversations because it is very important. And, uh, I, I wanna be blunt and say, Johanna, I, I don't think there's any way that this gets put in a drawer, uh, and left. There, there are things that need to be discussed and actions that need to be taken. So I thank you for your time and your effort to really dive into this, uh, and I, and the process of some of this in the short timeframe that Canopy had to get pulled into it and, and done is, uh, amazing. There's a lot of stuff in, in your report, I appreciate it, it's, uh, you know, the fact that was doing the research along with you guys the whole time, pretty much anyway, but, uh, to get sucked into this report and get some of those clickable links and, oop, take me down another path too, was, was quite interesting. So my biggest thing is thank you. Um, and I am very intrigued by, um, by your comments too about, uh, you know, that no one felt comfortable, you know, when they left. I, I think that is, uh, is an important sign. I, uh, I am a little intrigued, I guess you, you mentioned it about the, the one to five ratings of individuals and kinda seeing how that panned out a little bit. And I, I appreciate the, um, oh, what was it called? Uh, let me see. The triangle from the Colorado, um...
Oh, the behavioral transformation?
Yes, I, I really appreciate you putting that in there too. I thought that was a, a, a great overview of looking at, uh, that aspect of it, and so, you know, taking those kind of views, I thought was very helpful, so thank you. That's kinda what I wanted to share from the report, that clarifying.
Excellent. Rob?
So I, I have a couple of questions, uh, just following up on what DJ said. I am also interested in the distribution, uh, since it's been cited quite often this evening, even this, this 11 to four vote, if you will, what the distribution on that was. Do you have that information?
Yeah, we can, we can share the, the kinda detailed summary. We, I was a little hesitant, just wanted to present the thought process behind it. It's tempting to wanna kinda pull that consensus apart, and I think the, the CAC emphasized over and over, they wanted the design of this to highlight the remarkable consensus they agreed to at the beginning of the report, and the one thing that they were, uh, kind of, uh, a split vote you could say, is on the implementation of it. So we'll, we've got a giant Google folder with all of the background data that we're, we'll pass along.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I, I guess I'm also curious, uh, as I think about, you know, implementing some of these things, and I agree with DJ, this isn't going in any drawer. I mean, we may or may not implement everything that's in that report, but there'll be some changes, uh, at least if I have anything to say about it. So one of the things I'm curious to understand what the CAC's thought process on is this thing about, about minor drug offenses versus serious drug offenses and where, how, how does, I mean, I, I appreciate that Joanna said that sort of wasn't the committee's purview to figure out how to make it work, but I'm curious what was in people's minds as they made that distinction, because that, I, I'm struggling with that a little bit, frankly, to be honest with you.
Great, and if I could just insert real quick, I see my fellow facilitators, thanks whoever made the Zoom possible, I just wanted to introduce Marisol Rodriguez, Jacob Bornstein, and Rashawn Bliss, who did the lion's share of the facilitation work, and they've got some deeper knowledge on each of these points, uh, so they're a resource for us as we, um, as we deed them. So, but back to the question at hand, the distinction between the, uh, serious and less serious.
And I can remember if I might, I remember the minor drug offenses, because this is something that actually the police was very clear about it. They don't wanna be involved in minor drug offenses. They share that, um, that they run the risk of unnecessarily entangling a student on criminal legal processes. So one of the things that they say is, once you call us, you cannot un-call us. So once you call the police officer, they have to do what they have to do. And they, they do agree that they get called more often for some students than others when it has to do with minor drug offenses. So they were like, we don't, if you cannot call us, that would be great, and follow your code of conduct. And there was a huge concern about, um, zero tolerance policy from the entire committee when it had to do with minor drug offenses. We talk about vaping as one of the reasons why sometimes police officers get called, and this can have serious repercussions for BIPOC, uh, families. We know, that's what we were talking about, school to prison pipeline. So if you're calling a police officer for vaping for a, one of the BIPOC families, we know this, the juvenile system looks at those families very differently. There is a lot of research on this. So even the police agree on this, that they're like, if you, like, but once you call them, there is no going back. So they did, they, they actually agree on this one. The other one I don't remember as well, so maybe the team can help.
Did the officers who came and talked about that and agreed with that say anything about what they thought minor drug offenses were? I mean, vaping I get. Uh, I'm, I'm, I'm thinking about when you get to marijuana use and, I, I don't know, what, what constitutes a minor drug offense. Yeah, that's, I'm just looking for a definition, that's all.
Yeah, I think it would be really good when you're thinking of implementations to have those conver- those conversations with your teams, for sure.
Okay, yeah, I, yeah, thank you.
Other board members? Go ahead, Carolyn.
So I noticed under one of your conclusions, you had a little footnote about, um, trying to make, um, sure that after the SROs were moved from school, that safety was addressed. So what, what kind of safety concerns do you envision we might have if SROs are removed from the school? What, what was that footnote for? What was the conversation around that? Yeah, in the report, yeah. It's, it said, overall safety, um, will need to be addressed and response times, the res- the, the sentence about the response times and safety needing to be addressed when SROs removed. What did you mean by that?
I can take a first pass at that, and again, I'll look to my, I, I think the sentiment and the sentence underneath the final recommendations, uh, the acknowledgement, this is complex, this will take time, this is not a, a quick fix, there, there could very well be implications as you make this decision. The CAC emphasized over and over, paying attention to the unintended consequences of however you manage this will be a part of the ongoing accountability. So tracking that kind of data, what are the unintended consequences that nobody can, nobody can see, is I think probably what that, what that spoke to.
Okay, so there wasn't a specific unintended consequence that they were thinking of?
No, and I, again, I think the language and the overall, the sentiment in that final recommendation of, "CAC understands that implementing this process will take time, it is likely to face challenges, and will require monitoring and oversight to ensure..." It's basically, when you solve these complex problems, you never get it right perfectly every time, you have to adapt, have kind of an agile approach to problem solving. I think that's the, the general sentiment there.
I don't remember. I wish I could, I remember exactly what that footnote meant, but it was eight months, so I can imagine, uh, and I can make an inference in terms of safety. I think the elephant of the room continues to be shootings at schools, right? Like, we haven't talked about that, but that's a safety concern, that me as a mom, having kids in the school, I have, right? Like, that's something that nobody in the committee said, we don't care about that, nobody's worried about that. We live in United States. That's the reality of living in this country. So I think part of the charge for you guys is to figure it out, how can you provide a sense of safety for all of us, including in those occasions, if you don't have officers in all schools all the time? And so the extrapolation of that thinking is shootings happen in this country, not just as schools, they happen at King Supers, at FedEx, or concert venues, at... So if you continue with that logic, you'll end up militarizing the entire nation, 'cause we're all concerned about that. And is that where we're going? Is that the conversation we're gonna start having in terms of safety? And what it means to have that for those of us that don't feel safe in that scenario? So what are the other options? What are other school districts doing in this nation to help people fear safety, um, safe? That it doesn't mean it has to be police officers everywhere, in every room, all the time. What are other options? It might be that. I might be wrong.
I'll go ahead and ask a question if that's all right. So, um, one of the things I'm really grateful to the committee for having put effort into was, uh, the design and implementation of the survey. And I'd like to make sure I understand from, uh, whether it's the two representatives or the facilitators, uh, how that went about and whether, uh, the committee felt good about what they put out and the, the reach they got, and whether, and how much discussion there was to follow up that survey. It seems to be coming back and at us, so I'd, I'd like to understand more about that.
I can talk about it, but I don't wanna, if any of you wanna talk about it, please do it.
Um, I think the one thing that, um, some of us had trouble with was, um, in the intro to the survey, it was, um, a very biased look on SROs when none of us really were sure at that point what SROs were doing, and we didn't feel like it really, um, uh, well enough, um, represented what, how we felt, and that should have been addressed beforehand, and we think that might have affected some of our, uh, results, but also we weren't seeing those results as, um, this is going to be how it is, this is what the community necessarily wants, but, um, trying to get other voices other than the 12, 15 people in our committee were looking at at the time.
Okay, and could I clarify with you? Did the CAC, uh, design that language and agree to it, or was it, were you surprised by the language?
So I think there is two pieces. So when we talk about, I think there is three things I wanna talk about the survey. Those who are in favor of keeping SROs in school love the survey and the results of the survey. And those who felt like maybe they shouldn't be, I'm not sure, had questions, and those who felt like, uh, police officers should not be at the school, don't like the survey. So, right? So I want you to know that within the committee, how people felt, depending on how they felt about SROs. The piece of the language, yes, we had to do with the survey language, but one of the things that some of the members in the CAC ask is, can we inform people what a school to prison pipeline is? Can we inform people about the data we have about, uh, the disparities that BIPOC children are having right now at PSD? And the answer was no, that's biased. We cannot do that. If we do that, we're, might be signaling people who are answering to be like, oh no, then I don't want SROs. A surprise was that when you were going to answer, you have information about what SROs eh, are, and they're made by the police. So all the videos that you have that are, are police officers, like, playing basketball and having a great time and high fiving, there was not a balanced data before going into the survey. So we can speculate that that has something to do with the survey or not. We could speculate about only people who have access to digital, um, tools were able to answer. But I think Dwight, 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 I'm afraid I'm saying his name wrong.
It would be Dwayne.
Dwayne was really good at presenting the data, saying this is a snapshot of an opinion of this percentage of people, and this not represents everybody. And the third point I wanted to know about the survey is, this is the best we could do with the amount of time, instead of doing robust community, uh, conversations. So surveys are like the quickest, fastest, easiest way that you can find information, but it's not robust community conversations. I think that will be, I don't know, that, that's, that's what I wanted to say about the survey. I hope that helps answer the question.
Yeah, sure. Uh, any, how about facilitators? The other thing I would, just as I, as I hear your question, in terms of how the group felt about it, I think there was a remarkable effort to include the CAC voice in the design, and, and as anyone knows that designs a survey, it feels really different when you design it versus when you start getting the response versus when you see the community's response to the response. So I think there was an understandable shift of understanding of what those meant. I think Johann and Erin have explained the, um, the other thing that, and I imagine Dwayne has already presented to you, that as he helped us unpack the data, he was very, I think, very helpful in understanding, what are the limitations of claims you can base on it? You know, it's, it was tempting, I think, for many people that saw in there, the majority of people are in strong support of SROs. He would caution and say, the majority of the people, of the respondents, and this is the percentage, but we can't necessarily extrapolate, so he would caution against that. He would, at the same time, he would say, but, when you do the demographic breakdown, even using the BIPOC population that responded, they tended to be more favorable, and then he would caution and say, but... And then he would caution and say, but if you'll notice, people tend to be more favorable about the role of SROs when it comes to safety versus school climate. So he, I think, I would just say, his ability to kind of tease out from it, what claims are reasonable and warranted and what are limiting. But as we tried to say in the report, we found over and over again, the data can only go so far, because this is such a passionate issue. People tend to bring filters and preconceived notions as they look at the data. So we, I think all of us naturally tend to use data that confirms our side. That was one of the points in the process that we pivoted over to the polarity management, acknowledging, we won't sell this only by data. We, we need to understand how we can use each other's differing viewpoints to reach agreement.
Thank you. DJ?
So I had two questions, if we could dive in a little bit more, just to understand the, where law enforcement should not play a role in. There were a couple that kind of jumped out at me. And the first one was the building the relationships, which you talked about a little bit. And, and if you could give me a little bit more of what your guys' thinking was, or how that, how you envisioned that, I guess, maybe even.
I think the way I see it is that shouldn't, obviously not be their main goal. Because of that stress and trauma response that some students might have, law enforcement shouldn't be going out of their way to build relationships with students. If they do have a relationship with students, that's great. But at the end of the day, it's not a role they should be pushing themselves to achieve.
What I can say about that point is twofold. So I think if, I don't know, I might be making this inference, but if you ask police enforcement, is it part of your job to build good relationships with the community in general? I hope the answer is yes. And I hope the answer is yes for nurses, doctors, fire department. But you're not paying all of those institutions to have good relationships. Like, the tax dollars are not being used that way. Because if you go that line, then somebody can come and say, you know what I think is really important, religion? I really think we should have a good relationship with religious institutions, and we should make a contract to have that and pay them to do that. And the answer is no. Like, we, so if for some people that you think that that's very important, then as a family member, then you can pursue those things. You can make that decision about your children. The school district, we fell here, we shouldn't have contracts for the job that they're already doing. So part of their job is to build good relationships with communities. They can do that, they, that's part of their chart. And the other part in here is, I think, not all the chief police officers that you have contracts with feel the same way about the disproportionality with BIPOC community members. They have been very vocal about, they don't see a problem, they don't think it's an issue. So how can we contract with somebody that feels that way when the entire committee is saying, this is, this is concerning? We're, we need to do something about this. How do you write a contract to say somebody build relationships with this community when that person is like, we don't have any issues, there is no problem with BIPOC community members? That's concerning. And again, is it the chicken or the egg? But that's not your job. And we don't take on the skills to school to do that. We don't think about, oh, you know what, I'm gonna take my kids to school, because my priority is that they have a good relationship with police officers, or nurses, or lawyers, or whatever. We want them to be educated, so we take them to school. So that was something that we all agree on. We're like, that's not something that we should be paying this amount of money as being one of the priorities in their contract. Doesn't make sense.
Some of the specific phrasing, yeah, Roshan and Marcel, if, as the crafters of that language, if you wanted to add anything else, wanted to bring your voice in.
Marcel, you want to start?
I'll just say that I think Johann is completely correct, that the, there was a lot of conversation around this. And the, the real crux of it was that it doesn't matter, every adult, it doesn't matter who you are, should come into a school and build relationships with students. But I think ultimately, the biggest concern was that in the current language of the SRO contract, was that it was the primary responsibility, was to come in and build relationships. And I think the committee really felt that there are a number of ways you can, and, and police should, and SROs should, build relationships with students and the community, but that it didn't need to be in the classroom. And I think that was, or in the school building. And I think that was really the, the differentiating point, was that if there are police in the building, they should build relationships, no question asked. But it should not be the primary responsibility of a school to invite police in, in order, so students can then now build a relationship with students. I'm sorry, police can build a relationship with students. Like, that should not be the primary relationship, the primary goal of a program. And so I think that's just what this, and, and we went round and round on this language, and the language is very specific for a very, for, for a very good reason. So Roshan, would you add anything to what I said?
Just mostly to underline that I think that it's important for the understanding of what this report is saying, to really flag that the CAC members were, when it came to these roles that law enforcement should play or should not play, it was about the roles that felt important to call in police to respond, or to address, to play X, Y, or Z role, whereas they wouldn't have been called or present in the first place. That was the kind of knife's edge that was making the determination about what should be a role, or the police playing what should be. It was really about, what are we going to call policing for to play X, Y, or Z role? Whereas otherwise, the assumption would be, because they're being seen as a last resort, someone else would handle it. And so the idea that we would call in police for the purpose of building relationships with young people, was the, the CAC was saying like, no, we don't want to, you know, call 911 to get someone to come in and build relationships with young people. But we do want to call 911 if there's, you know, someone who's like selling drugs to, you know, students or something like that.
We're, we're happy to answer any additional questions, because Roshan, and just so the, the council is, understands, Roshan and I worked mainly on this section of the report with, with CAC members. So if there are additional questions, we are happy to answer them.
I, I would just add that, that, the wording, I don't, I don't think then came across, at least not to me that way. Because it really came across as basically, you know, if they come in, it should be silent. And, and I, and I think that is, would be terrible. So, and, and the fact that it was that way. So I'm happy to hear the explanation and for you, thank you for diving into it, because, yeah, that's not how I, how I read it on that part. And then that probably is gonna go into the second one that I had kind of concerns with as how it was, was the, the suicide, responding to threats of suicide. You know, because the, it's titled, they should not. And then in here, you know, your explanation talks about shouldn't be the first go-to resource. My concern would be that it's, time is precious in something, anything like that too. And so, you know, I, I just want to make sure that there's clear understanding of what you guys were thinking and what was expected there too.
So I, I completely appreciate the question. And just so we're clear, we are the facilitation team, and so we are representing, it is not our recommendation or our thoughts. So just so we're super clear on that point. But so to this end, right, I just think, I think one of the, the public commentators commented on his experience with a friend of his, right? And so I think this, this recommendation goes to that experience of, yes, you are right. At, at the end of the day, it's more important that someone is there, and I apologize, working from home with my dog shaking her collar. I apologize if you can hear that. At the end of the day, it's more important that someone is there to protect and to help a, a student that is potentially suicidal. But, and, I would say, that the feeling of the CAC is that, take her collar off. The feeling of the CAC is that in the best case scenario, that would not be a police officer, right? Like, it should be a mental health professional that shows up on the scene and does that work. Now, at the end of the day, I'll be honest with you, the CAC just wants that, that child to be protected. But, but they felt like the most appropriate person to respond was not a police officer. So that, I think, and you're gonna hear that, like, throughout this, is that, yes, we understand, they understood that police do need to be involved in certain times, and in case of emergency. But that should not be the first person that responds sometimes. So I think that's what I would say. Roshan, I'm sure you have some stuff to add to this one.
Yeah, just to say that there was, I remember in the conversation that the CAC members were having, there was this kind of nuance and distinction around, you know, the, someone who were concerned is suicidal, and someone who were concerned actively as a plan and possibly a weapon to hurt themselves with, that those would be treated differently. That the kind of call for, yes, we should involve law enforcement and call them in if there is a weapon inside a school, or a weapon or violence, you know, including violence to oneself, involving a student outside of school? Like, that, that would be an appropriate situation to involve law enforcement for? There was a distinction that was made in some of the conversations around this specific recommendation from the CAC, that, you know, if we are afraid that student X is, you know, in a bathroom and like about to hurt themselves with a gun or a knife, that that might be a situation where a law enforcement officer could be asked to respond. But if we're simply concerned that student X has a, we're concerned that they might hurt themselves, but we don't know of any imminent plan, and we're, we're, you know, it's not clear that there's a weapon involved, then it would be a, a non-law enforcement and, and mental health response. That was a, a, an important nuance that came out in some of the discussion that I think is irrelevant here for understanding that recommendation.
Yeah, thank you, thank you so much for going deeper on that. Because, yeah, I, I just want to make sure it, because I feel that's how you were, you guys probably were thinking. For me, reading, you know, the headline of not is pretty defining too. So I, I just want to make sure that that's clarified, and thanks for taking the time.
If I could just add really quickly, and I, I know you probably want to move through this quickly, there are a lot of nuances. And I just think asking as many questions as you all want to is really important, because to Bill's earlier point, this was not an easy process, nor, you know, the charge of the committee of a pro-con approach, we really fought back on, because this is not a pro-con. This is, this is really nuanced in what you all are trying to do. So we're super happy to dive into any of these specific things with you.
And I have to add really quickly, like Marcel said, not for everybody, a police officer is the best person when you're having a mental health crisis, and when you're having suicidal thoughts. So who's making that decision? The person that's making that decision and who to call knows that. Who's this kid? Who's this family? Is the, is the police really the best person to call in suicide ideation? Or is it the therapist? And like I said, there is many other places that are having to grapple with this and are creating programs that are very successful. So it'd be great for you to, to look into that as well.
Excellent. Board members, other questions? Go ahead, Kristin.
Just wanted to do a clarifying question, because, you know, in looking at the recommendations, there was the development of risk, risk threat assessments, and then there was the implementation. And the development that was not having officers there as, as first, law enforcement being there. And then the law enforcement would be in there with the implementation. And my, my question really is just where that, that safe-to-tell analysis fell into that one? Because I, that one, I wasn't remembering correctly, when we talked about the safe-to-tell.
Well, it's probably, this is a good point to make the connection back to the principles as well. Like, each of these also has the, those five principles we laid on top of it, is that if you use law enforcement as a last resort, but when they're the proper entity to do it, they have a very specific role. You kind of get the right nuance. And I so appreciate your questions, that's exactly what the group was wrestling with. So I think there's a statement in there that says, you know, we are not legal experts, there are rules that govern all of these. But within that larger framework, what we're balancing here is, do we need law enforcement here? Is there someone else that's better suited? But if it's them, they should appropriately be here. And beyond that, it's really difficult to write the specificity that you need.
I, I guess I wasn't necessarily asking about that specificity. I think more in the thought process of where the analysis of safe-to-tell fell, what, what you were thinking on that, or what the group was thinking. That's, that's when I'm just not, I don't remember clearly on that, was that, were we thinking that the safe-to-tell was important for? I, I guess I'm not, I'm not asking my question properly. Yeah, was it important for them to be involved with the initial analysis of safe-to-tell? Were we saying that, or were you saying that it was, there was an initial safe-to-tell? And then what they deemed to be pushed towards, they deemed it'd be law enforcement and be necessary for that, then law enforcement was called in? That's what, that's what the group was talking about, is that correct?
Yeah.
That's how I'm remembering that?
Yeah, I think, like, the initial figuring out if a risk or threat assessment is necessary, is when they shouldn't. But there will, there can be a time when it is deemed necessary, where it becomes a bigger issue where law enforcement should be involved. If that makes sense.
It doesn't, I'm just trying to, that's what I'm remembering as well. And I just want to make, I just want to make sure that I'm not misremembering or inserting words.
I can't remember. Anybody in the team?
I think.
So Kristin, so Kristin, I would just answer, I don't think they had this conversation in specifics around safe-to-tell, but team members, please confirm if I'm wrong. I think the bigger thing was that there are school leaders and school administration typically understand what their risk assessments are, like, on a planning level. And so the, the thing was that we, there are times we actually do want to invite law enforcement in, but it shouldn't be a requirement that we're required to do this. But I don't know, to your point, Kristin, that there was a very specific conversation in the CAC about if there is a safe-to-tell response that comes in, how does it get then handled? Roshan, please correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think there was that specific of a, quite, a, a discussion. But it was just more generally, we want, it goes to building administration first, and then if we need, if, if building administration is like, we don't know, whatever, like, or we need additional input, then we would definitely go to law enforcement. So again, it's not keeping law enforcement out of it, it's just not that very first response. But Roshan, please correct me if I'm misremembering.
No, no, I don't think you are. I don't remember either this, in this section, when, when the CAC was discussing safe-to-tell being part of the risk assessment conversation. But it was about the kind of leaving it up to the discretion of the professionals, the educators who already do the risk assessments, to make their decision about again, whether or not they're going to invite law enforcement to be part of a conversation, or if it's going to be presumed that law enforcement would always be part of it, and if you don't want them involved in too bad. That was the kind of nuance that they were making, was that the professional, the PSD staff who were a part of that conversation were, were really clear that they know what types of risk or threat assessments require the involvement and participation of law enforcement in both the creation and the implementation of those assessments, and that they wanted the option to say, we've got it, we're, we're totally cool handling this student's situation. Or we know that this is actually a relevant thing for law enforcement in the, in the area, or who are going to interact with students to be aware of and help us, you know, support this, this assessment implementation.
And I, I would just say broader, I think this is why you all are getting a, and I apologize, we all wish we could be there today in person, but this is why you're getting a broader perspective and a broader recommendation than you probably expected, and it's not as clear-cut, is because many people felt that they wanted to involve law enforcement when they wanted to involve law enforcement. But currently, it's the default, and it's the go-to, and it's the always there. And there was a, a just broad picture, is there's a feeling of moving that model to more of a And there was a, a, just broad picture is there's a feeling of moving that model to more of a, when we need them, when we want them, um, versus it is the default. So I just would say that, like, that is the bigger picture. You're going to continuously hear from us this evening. And, and again, it's not from us. We're representing the views of the CAC.
Yeah, and going back to the, um, safe to tell, I think it was mentioned at some point, but like we said, I don't, we'd never really went into detail about it. Correct me if I'm wrong, but does the safe to tell go straight to SROs?
Do we have a staff member who can respond to that?
The safe details do go to our security department and also to Four Collins PD. And, and they, they come in 24 hours a day, seven days a week. So we're, our staff is not on 24/7. So they do go to police also.
Okay, so I think there was some nuance with the safe to tell conversation, but yeah, I don't think we ever went into depth with that.
Thank you. Carolyn?
Yeah, and so listening to the conversation about, um, whether or not, um, a suicidal child should be reported to the police or not, made me think about, um, an oath that we all sign when we become board members and that we're mandated reporters and so are teachers and everybody actually in the school building are mandated reporters. And so I just looked on the state website and I'm not exactly sure, but maybe Autumn can tell me or Todd, Dr. Lambert, if, um, su, a child's reporting, um, thoughts of suicide or suicidal ideation come under mandated reporting.
Obviously each situation is very different, but I think anytime a mandated reporter even senses or has an inkling that a child's in danger, they have an obligation, a legal obligation to act. And I think in many cases, if they've got even the slightest that someone has suicidal ideations, they need to respond. That would be an expectation because that student can be in peril.
And you can call the hub. Uh, you don't have to call the police. So mandated reporter means that you have to call the child protection department and child protection department is not the police. So I think there is nuance in the child law. So I'm sure you have lawyers and, but that's the type of thing that you want a teacher or a principal to know when they have to make that call, that they don't have to go to the code and be like, do we call 911 or do we call the hub? And you can call child protection department for that. Thank you for asking that question. But see, it's like so, so granular, but you want to have staff that can make that decision when they need to.
Okay, other questions, comments? Kristen?
If, and if anybody else has any questions, I just wanted to do a little closing. Um, I just wanted to say thank you to, um, to Civic Canopy, to John, um, to Erin Johanna for, for, um, coming tonight. But to the entire CAC group, I know that this was a very challenging, um, time that you, you gave us. Um, it was once a week. Um, I know it was probably not your favorite thing to do every week. Uh, and so, um, but I also know that what you did is going to make Pruder School District better. Um, and so I just want to say thank you for that. I want to say, um, thank you for the tremendous work that went into it. I know, I mean, when we started this, the fact that we could agree on 50 things, I, you, if you had asked me that in the beginning, I would have been like, okay, that sounds nice, but, um, and the fact that we did it, that you did agree on 50 things, um, is truly astounding and impressive and, um, you know, is people coming from all different perspectives. Um, and so I just, uh, want to say a heartfelt thank you to you and for all of the work, all of the thought, all of the heart, all of the vulnerability, all of the, um, just tremendous effort that went into this. Um, and no, it will not be put in a drawer. Um, there are, I think, lots of discussions to be had. Um, and you, you, like I said, you have made PSD better simply by doing this. And now it'll be our turn to, to act on it.
Final comments? Go ahead, DJ.
Erin, enjoy the rest of your senior year.
Thank you.
Unbelievable that you stepped up to do this and, uh, thank you so much.
Okay, I'll, I'll just repeat again. Uh, John, I'll start with you again. So thanks for the, the effort and for the support of all of you on this side of the aisle for making this happen. I think that was a big deal, um, kind of listening to the community and, and making it happen. John, you led the way. I really appreciate it. Civic Canopy for stepping up. I realize, um, it was probably, maybe this is what you do every day. I'm not sure, but it must have had a unique PSD flavor. We appreciate that. But most of all, to, uh, the 15 members who did step up and, and gave their time, please know that the board truly, truly appreciates your efforts. So with that, we'll, uh, call it an agenda item. So thank you very much.
Thank you all. Thanks for the great questions and the chance to talk about it.
All right.
Thanks, team.
Okay, um, board members, if anybody need a break? Okay, we'll, we'll, uh, call it a five-minute break and return whenever you return.
Seven fifty P M. We'll reconvene and we will launch into item six point two, which is a preliminary budget update from for F Y twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two, and I will turn this over to you, Dr. Lambert.
President Fev, thank you. We have Brett Parsons for a return engagement. I know we always enjoy hearing from him and he's always so well prepared. I don't even think he needs an introduction other than what I just gave him. Brett, you go.
One day I will master the technology. Not not quite there yet. So thinking about the preliminary budget and where we left off, the real changes in relation to previous is the March thirty first, third quarter financial management summary, her budget estimates are complete. So these roll into our multi-year projections and these are the last full detail budget estimates that we have in the current year that are used for the preparation of both the preliminary and the proposed budget. So that's where we're at at this point in time. In regards to looking at twenty one, twenty two, the long bill, all those sayings, no change from where we were a couple of weeks ago. School finance still has not been introduced as of today at the capital. So we don't think there's going to be a change in P P R related to the introduction of school finance. It's just the detail, the actual P P R run and and the things that come from that. So as we think about page one or the first slide where we show basically a kind of scaled down multi-year projection with a couple of years dropped off to make it a little bit easier to read. The twenty twenty one column, as I mentioned, has been updated from the second quarter budget estimates and the revised budget. And there was very, very little change between where we're at three months ago to where we're at now. So when we think about both the fiscal year twenty one column and then the fiscal year twenty two column and where we're at right now, we're really at a snapshot in time. So we have the information from the current year and we're building the information and the the data that we have in the preliminary budget for next year based on what we know now. In a normal year, we feel pretty confident about what the future is going to bring. This year, due to COVID, you know, the realities, the uncertainty that exists for next year, which, you know, is fifteen months away at the end of next fiscal year, you know, is something that's really hard to measure. And that's what we're trying to capture in a lot of our conversation tonight and the pieces that we go through. So if we're looking at the twenty one, twenty two column specifically, no change in the state formula pieces, very, very minor changes in the other local revenue, primarily the other category itself, and then a little bit on the other state categorical pieces, we account for what the inflation rate is on categorical funds and the final piece there. So all in all, the revenue picture is very similar to everything we've been discussing as far back as January. So as we think about, I mentioned certainty. As we think about the certainty scale, revenue for twenty one, twenty two, I feel about as certain about as we can feel given what we know right now. So the reality is the variability is going to be in school finance. We have a good, we have a good feeling about where school finance act is. We know the negative factor buy down number is already in the long bill, so we feel good about that. The other revenue pieces are really very minimal in comparison to that portion. Then as we go through expenditures, we've already talked about the school pieces, the additions there, everything up to the non-school budget areas. So at this point in time, we feel very good about the budget adjustments we've made, the stuff we're going to talk about here in a little more detail here in a second. We feel good about those areas. The only areas that concerns the wrong word, but the only area that that I have, I guess, a little bit of concern about next year is just the uncertainty piece. We can make plans all day long to be open five days a week, normal next year. We can't guarantee what happens that we can't control. I mean, if we look at the last twelve months, sure, we have a plan, we have the best plan possible, but we also need to be prepared and be cognizant that there could be challenges and issues come along that we just can't even fathom or understand yet at this point. So we'll go over some of those resources set aside for some of those contingencies here in a few slides as well. So going through the expenditures, we've already talked about the compensation to benefit base. We talked about the health and dental, the benefits subcommittee set that rate increase at two percent for next year instead of the five percent that we typically do. So that decreased costs there a little bit. Then we have the site based non-staffing budgets. So we've made adjustments for those for the coming year. And the main difference in those areas over the prior year is in the current year, at least, we have a lot of the COVID response and we have millions of dollars of what we're accounting for COVID in the general fund currently that are living in that area, some of which will be moved to the S R grant programs coming up, and then some ultimately will stay in the general fund. Another area that is in there, you know, we mentioned the child nutrition transfer, the loss in the current fiscal year, we're anticipating a minor loss, basically half of our current year amount next year until we know more. One change that has happened in the last couple of days is the federal government has extended the free lunch program for all students regardless of the free introduced forms. In general, that is a fantastic thing. It makes a whole lot of sense. It takes the stigma out of the program. It reduces administrative burden, a whole lot of good things. And talking with my peers, bigger long term issues that arise from that is the lack of free and reduced lunch count data, which drives everything from school finance to grant programs, et cetera. So there is, you know, a little bit of, a little bit of challenge that come there. So that was, that's where the the more minor adjustment areas of the budget are. When we think back to, if you go back up a couple of lines to the two hundred and fifty six point nine million dollars in compensation and benefits, that really is where the majority of the additions since we talked last have have occurred at. So when we were talking about the non-school areas, we were still getting the information around a lot of the support departments, operations, transportation, those kind of areas. So as we think about next year and what we're including in the preliminary budget, we're starting to add back custodial positions that were cut this year as an example, building maintenance staff that were cut this year is an example. We have a fourth dispatch position to account for summer programming. We have budget capacity for the full complement of bus operators needed to fill all routes is an example. So those are just some of the highlight areas that we have built into the base budget as we think about next year and we think about getting back to normal. Now, when we think about bigger risk in the long term and how we get back to normal, think back twelve months ago. So we cut the budget and we said in, you know, September, October, November, we're going to start talking about these budget cuts and how they look, specifically the people and then the operating budgets. The reality is because we were in phase one, two, whatever phase we were in for the majority of this year, we don't have an accurate budget picture about if the budget cuts we did last year are sustainable or not, because I look at the budget reports and a lot of our operating budgets are underspent compared to where they would normally be because kids weren't in school or we're not doing our normal activities. So I think we also need to remain flexible as we go forward. So we have a plan in place for twenty one, twenty two, based on what we know now. And the reality is a lot of the conversations that we had eleven and twelve months ago about the budget cuts and future conversations about adequacy, they're still going to exist next year as we thought they were going to exist this year. So that's just, I know everybody wants to be done with me and probably not hear from me for a very long time, but it's really going to be a long, multi-year process as we work through this from beginning to end and ultimately get back to ongoing general fund operations. So that's really the highlight as far as where we're at there. If you look down towards the bottom of the twenty one, twenty two column, the ongoing budget available right now for the final components of the budget, any recommendations from the Z V V process, salary, benefits, those kind of things, we're looking at four million dollars left of ongoing revenue. So you're, you're here, here a little more about that later this evening. So when we think about this budget right here in the four million dollar number, going back to the fall and going back to January when we built this, this was built and planned to be absent of any additional federal funding. So like we talked about a couple of weeks ago, we have the S R two funding and we have the S R three funding that have changed since the development of this plan and ultimately where we're at now. So I want to go ahead and go to the next slide and talk in a little more detail about those programs and how they're going to implement or impact this plan as we go to the to the next few years. So as we think about, I talked about the certainty scale a minute ago. We have kind of the certainty scale for general fund budget. We have the the certainty scale for the for the federal program, for the the S R and ultimately the C R F funds that we've already spent. So on the S R two, we're far enough along, I mentioned a month or two ago, that it takes probably two, three months on average from when these funds are awarded at the federal level until we have concrete guidance at the state level by the time it all trickles down. That's where we're at with S R two. So at this point in time, we have full certainty on the allowable use of those funds. So what we discussed previously, using the eight million dollars available to fund the remaining portion in the general fund of P S D V as well as charging direct cost are going to be doable in the current fiscal year. So what does this really mean to the chart before? Because the chart before, as I said, is a static picture in time before we overlay the the S R funds to those. So what this entry is going to do is basically increase revenue by one point two million dollars for indirect cost, decrease expenditures by six point nine million, and what that is is a net increase in reserves of eight point one million dollars. Identical concept to what we did with the coronavirus relief funds last year, pick up from the general fund, move to the federal. We follow like the most restrictive to least restrictive approach that then leaves eight million dollars of general fund COVID response reserve we use to address COVID issues, soft landing going forward. So looking at S R three, as I just said, the S R two is pretty stable. We're set on those now. So as we talk about S R three, we're still in the the middle stages between basically finalization between the the federal government passes it, the award goes out, C D E is doing the work, and the accounting staff's going to, going to the the weekly C D E update, hearing more about these programs. So at this point in time, I would say that it's pretty set in stone, although there's probably still just a little bit of nuance left between the final ruling in black and white from C D E versus what we ultimately do by the end of June as far as how we, how we spend these funds. Now, thinking about the the expense of these funds, same as we did for the others, the accounting staff is very innovative in how they take the information from C D E, consult with the external audit, and, you know, we we sailed through the audit processes past year with the expense of the C R F funds. So we're following the accounting staff, I shouldn't take any credit, the accounting staff is following that same process this year, making sure, you know, I's dotted, T's crossed, the whole thing in regards to the expense of federal funds. So these bullet points, so we have eighteen million dollars for S R three. The reality is we're not going to be able to spend all of it in the current year, but we're looking at spending the three bullet points for continuation of services, primarily keeping staff such as bus operators on on staff all year long, even when we weren't in phase four throughout the year, a little bit of funding for COVID response and charging indirect costs to the grant program. So out of the eighteen million dollars, what that means is we can spend a little over ten million dollars of it in the current fiscal year. That'll increase reserves. And so when you think about the previous slide, eight million from Easter two, ten million from S R three, those two combined is our COVID response reserve going forward. And then that'll leave the, next slide, please, that'll leave the the remaining balance of seven point nine million to be used in a following fiscal year. So as we think about those two components and how they go together, if we're talking about the eighteen million dollars for the COVID response reserve, so exact same concept we did this past year, what can that be used for? It can be used to balance the budget. You know, we talked about revenue at this point is pretty certain. The expense side is where more uncertainty lies. If everything goes according to plan, you know, I think we'll be pretty solid in regards to our assumptions and where we're at with budget. If things outside of our control happen, if learning loss is bigger than we think, if targeted programming, you know, just really dwarfs what we think it's going to be, if any of these things happen, this is an area we can look to to address it. We have, you know, COVID general phone response. I mentioned we don't know, you know, I think the days of Plexiglas and that kind of stuff might be over, but there might be new stuff come out next week, you know, come out in a couple of months. So as we go forward, we'll have flexibility to deal with that. And then ultimately, how do we get to a soft landing? I mentioned, you know, earlier about the the realities, the sufficiency of some of the operating budgets at the cut levels, we won't really know until we get pretty deep into the upcoming fiscal year. I mentioned the child nutrition program. We're planning on potentially a one million dollar operating transfer in the twenty one, twenty two budget to address that the the operating shortfall. It was close to two million dollars anticipated in the current year. The reality is if we're in school, you know, five days a week, full year with the free, with the free meals for all students, this should be a pretty favorable year in regards to the reimbursement rate. If something changes that situation, you know, the number could be a little bit higher. So those are just really the things that we're working through as we, as we kind of get through the whole budget process itself. And then, as I mentioned a minute ago, unfortunately, this isn't really the end of the budget processes. We think back over the last year and where we hope to be at this point in time. We're still in the beginning to mid phase and it's a multi-year process between how we get ultimately to the end. So that's talking about the COVID response reserve in the general fund, which is the most flexible use of funds, which is where we're trying to keep resource at to address the situation as we go forward. Then, as I mentioned, out of, out of S R three, we have seven point nine million dollars remaining for use in the upcoming fiscal years. So at this point in time, these are resources we're talking about using for summer programming in both summer of twenty one as well as summer of twenty two. The bulk of this is required to be used for learning loss of which summer programming qualifies, but there's also talk, you know, about tutoring, intervention to address learning loss, et cetera, a lot of instructional type, type focus as far as how we get back to, you know, how we get back to normal and those kind of pieces. I think that's really the highlights about the general fund reserve and then the S R funds and where we're at going forward. So thinking about the timeline piece of it, we have negotiations on May the sixth. So that'll be here next week already. It feels like it's two weeks away, but times, times moving pretty quick at this point. Then we have a budget update at the first May meeting and then at the second May meeting, we'll have a proposed budget. So typically, there are minor changes between the preliminary budget and the proposed budget. Any final outstanding adjustments that we have that we need to make in the general fund, we'll do an update between now and then, as well as any changes that come from salary and benefits as a result of negotiations on May the sixth. So those would be the big numbers that we expect to see change between, between May eleventh and May twenty fifth. And then this year, our plan is to adopt the budget at the first June meeting and we aspire to go back to our traditional format of no change between the proposed budget and the adopted budget at the first meeting in June. So based on the timeline we're on now, based on the information we know now, we think that's realistic to be, to be able to make that plan and shoot for adoption at the beginning of June. So I think it hit the highlights. I've got no idea how long I've talked. I was shooting for twenty minutes, so I don't know if I'm close or not.
We actually weren't timing you, just so you know, so.
Jill was.
She's behind me, so.
I Jill, she has a red light over there and she turned it on.
Yeah. How about this? She didn't kick me or shoot anything at me. Board questions? Comments? Anything at all? Wow.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll just, I'll just say, like I normally do, because it's always well earned that you guys have done a great job working through all of the issues that have come along throughout the year and getting this budget together. And and of course, all the, all the budget redesign stuff too that happened from where we're sitting pretty seamlessly. I know there was a lot of work involved in it. So thank you for, thank you for doing that and look forward to the conclusion of this year's version of this, this extravaganza.
Well, thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
D J?
I have a clarifying question that you guys put it in the footnotes and I'm still dense enough not to understand it completely, I guess. With the primary budget, you've got, you've got your actual budget and your estimated. Can you, that estimated one, can you define that a little bit better for me maybe?
So the estimated column for twenty twenty one represents the budget estimates, what we think actual expenditures will be at June thirtieth, and those numbers match the third quarter financial management summary from the May thirty first budget run. So that's what we expect budget to be at at year end. And I mentioned snapshot in time, notwithstanding the S R two and S R three accounting pieces and entries that we were talking about a moment ago.
So, okay, yeah. So then, because you're going to spend more than through.
So what's going to happen? So I mentioned, it's why we added the eighteen nineteen column to the multi-year projections. Nineteen twenty expenditures are skewed by a major entry for the coronavirus relief funds. So right now, the estimated column is correct. And what we know has already occurred in the current year is some accounting entries for the full expenditure of the coronavirus relief funds as well as the S R one programming. So what we're going to see is the estimated expenditures in various categories depending on where the funds were spent. Ultimately, the estimated category is going to decrease by up to eighteen million dollars for the, basically it's a journal entry that moves eighteen million dollars of expenditures from the general fund to the S R two and S R three grant program. And that's what gives us ultimately, when we do that, the expenditure estimate, it'll ultimately be actual, will decrease eighteen million dollars. And in the balance section on the bottom of the budget, the COVID response reserve will go from zero to eighteen million dollars. And that'll be the amount that we're talking about and addressing in some of the fiscal years.
Thank you. Thanks.
Okay. Anything else? All right. Brett, thank you very much.
Good to see everyone.
For joining us. Yeah. Yeah. Keeping this posted. All right. So that brings us to item six point three, which is the school year update. And I'll turn it again over to you, Dr. Lambert.
Thank you, President Fev. I do, before I introduce them, I do want to echo what I I heard Rob say, you know, they took us through that budgeting process and made it look seamless. And and that's the testament not only to Brett and Dave, but to their staff. There's a lot of people you don't get to see at the board meetings that do remarkably hard work. It is much more nuanced than just, you know, straight line budgeting. There's a lot of factors into it. And I'm really proud of them and I know you are as well. But it's kind of a testimony. I told those guys, when they come here, the number of questions over time has started to reduce because of their succinct, they're clear, and they build on prior, which is always a smart way to do it. So I just want to echo that. I really appreciate those comments. We are at our final agenda item here on the regular agenda. It's the school year update and Assistant Superintendents Mr. Scott Nielsen and Dr. Tracy Guile are going to provide that update. Who's going first? Dr. Guile, it's all yours.
Good evening. Thank you, Dr. Lambert, President Fev, members of the board. Happy to give a school update tonight. So throughout the past months, we've been giving updates about how different phases of learning are going. And so we want to start pointing forward to how next school year is going to open with our best hopes. So I know many people are wondering how we foresee Pooter School District reopening in the fall. And we're looking forward to opening the school year with in-person learning for all K through twelve students, five days a week and four days a week for preschoolers. So essentially our pre-pandemic school day. We've seen firsthand the benefits of students, teachers and staff of being back together in school and still believe that that is what is best for kids. The Laramie County Department of Health and Environment Director Tom Gonzalez continues to support in-person learning, saying that students are safest in school where there are consistent health protocols to minimize the spread of COVID nineteen. This sentiment is bolstered by the increasing numbers of adults and eligible teenagers who are being vaccinated and a step that health officials predict will reduce cases in Laramie County. And so pointing forward, our first day of school is August thirteenth. That's a transition day for sixth and ninth graders and all students will start school on August sixteenth. And then, as best as we know, there will probably be some health protocols in place. We'll continue to require masks as we will during our summer programs. We anticipate that the protocols may change as based on COVID nineteen conditions in Laramie County. And our hope is that the protocols become less restricted over time. And we do still have that option for one hundred percent virtual learning for the twenty one, twenty two school year with P G A V. And that is the one hundred percent online option. And then we also have an existing hybrid option through P G A V. There is still opportunity to register for next school year. All of those forms are available online on our website as well as school of choice options. And while we can't promise anything with one hundred percent certainty, we do feel like this past semester has shown us that students can be in person five days a week. And right now, as of today, we have ninety eight point five percent of our students in in-person learning five days a week. So we feel like pointing forward that that is, you know, the direction we're headed and looking forward to making plans for the fall. Thank you.
And I'll just add to what Dr. Guile said, as we point forward, you think about things like extracurricular activities, athletics, those connect and engage opportunities for students to enhance their student experience. We expect those to be up and running as well, much like they are now. But, you know, we've got middle school sports that'll close this year. We've got high school sports that continue to go as we speak. We've got four big proms happening this Saturday. And we expect as we roll into next year to continue to enhance those opportunities for students. And we're looking forward to it. Tracy and I have both had a chance to be out in buildings, as I know many of you have as well. And you see the students are excited and still, they're with us as they're back in school, right? We, we hear from time to time, masks aren't a big thing. When you're in school, they don't even notice. I heard Tracy today say you, you're, you're at lunch and you're watching kids start to put food in their mouth. They don't even realize they have masks on. So they're far more comfortable with it than we give them credit for. They're happy to be back in school. They're engaged. They're doing a great job. And our, the percentage of our students that have access is up ninety seven, ninety eight percent on a day to day basis. So we're looking forward to what it looks like in the fall. We're really looking forward to that, that transition. And and then I'll close by, by just honoring, as we made the transition this year, as we make the transition next year, those that make it go are our teachers. And and I say that to say next week is Teacher Appreciation Week. So for those paying attention and for all here, honor our teachers next week because they truly are who makes magic happen in this district. So thanks to teachers as we So thanks to teachers as we look forward to next week. And we look forward to appreciating you as we move through next week and on into next year.
Thank you both. Okay, Kristen?
You know, I just wanted to share a little story, because I was able to go to Riffenberg this week. And one of the teachers there, I believe it was in first grade, the kids had earned a certain number of points, and they got to decide what to do with those points. They could, you know, do anything they wanted. And they decided that they wanted to skip recess to do more learning with their teacher. That was what they decided. So when you say that...
Is that where Naomi's kids go?
So yeah, when you say the teachers are making all the difference and the kids are doing in-person learning and just loving it, I can attest that that's what they decided they wanted to do. So, yeah, it was great.
Great story. Other questions or comments? Go ahead, DJ.
I just have a question about how C Mass and the testing went that we had to do and if we have any information.
It's a little preliminary, because we still have some testing. Some of the sites I was in today were doing makeup testing. And it has been interesting this year, because you're sort of in a rolling testing cycle, because you're testing the masses, but you got your quarantine students, so they come back. And so one of the schools today was in like their third phase of makeup tests. We have pockets where we've got large number of opt-outs. I think we sort of expected we'd see pockets. And I, to be honest, wouldn't have been shocked had we seen bigger amounts of opt-outs, just given the nature of the season this year. We didn't even know we were taking them until late, and I think that was pretty public this year. So, but schools have done a good job. And we exchanged conversation at break that a couple of us in here have students that were excited to take the C Mass. So my daughter being one of them. So it's going well, DJ, overall.
And I'll just add, at the elementary, one of the schools I was at, it is spring testing season for sure. So this week, they were dibbling. Next week, they'll C Mass, and the week after that, they'll MAPS. So it'll be three consecutive weeks of, you know, different assessments. And as Scott shared, many children love and enjoy taking the tests. And so they don't feel it as, you know, that subsequent test after test after test, that they just get used to it and in some cases, enjoy it.
Other questions? Okay, great. And nice announcement, so exciting to hear about next year. Excellent. Okay, while Dr. Lambert said that was our last subject, he was not paying attention to the hour-long policy review we have scheduled.
I said, regular meeting. Regular meeting.
Okay, so 7.1 is a policy review for the governance process policies. And this is purely discussion. Do board members wish to discuss any of these policies? Do any of board members actually review them? Okay, all right, just checking. I'll hold on a second. DJ?
You know, one of the things that really jumped out in reviewing them is that we have some work to do as we have just finished up the superintendent evaluation. There's a self kind of evaluation that we really need to put some time and effort into trying to set up and look at the items that are listed on, there are so many of these, I forgot which number it is even. But 3.8? Oh, yeah, 3.8, I think is what it is. I also want to ask this question, if, does it need to be a policy or a procedure that we name these digital files consistently? Looking at them, they're all, there's not a good system there, you know? And I really like, you know, personally, I like the one where it's GP 3.6, and then it gives you an idea of what it's about, the last date that it was revised. But some of these are all over the place. And I kind of wonder if that's something that we should try to clean up going forward and make that a little bit more uniform.
So you suggested we need to add a policy for the naming of them? I'm just...
I'm asking, do we need to name that? Or how to...
I was actually, I am going to ask Autumn if it's fine that we could just ask you to rename the files if we wanted to. Is that correct? Okay. Because I think, I actually also had noticed there were some that were named, and you could tell what was inside of them.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
So those are the two things that really jumped out at me going through these that I would want to bring out.
Great. And I somewhat was wondering if somebody was going to ask about the self-evaluation, because that does come up. I think Carolyn's asked that a number of times over the years, whether we're doing that. And that's a fair question, and we could certainly, you know, that's up to board members to start talking about and bringing up as a possibility. And how would we do it? So, okay. Rob, did you have a... Okay. Anybody else? Kristen?
I was just going to suggest that that would be a good discussion to have at a retreat. We could go through those questions that are in there and have that discussion at a retreat.
Okay. Yeah, we can discuss the retreat topic, so.
I'm willing to evaluate you all.
Thank you, Naomi.
I'll just bring that to the retreat.
But you're not willing to say it over the microphone, I noticed, so.
I am willing to evaluate you all, and I will bring that to the retreat.
All right, any other comments on these policies? Okay, we will proceed through the year with these as written in that case. So that brings us to item 8.0. So these are, we have two executive sessions this evening. These will be the last items on the agenda, other than coming back into the room to adjourn the meeting. So would I have a board member willing to read the motion for the executive session? Naomi?
I move that the board enter executive session for the purpose of developing the strategy of the school district for negotiations related to the 2021, 2022 Collective Bargaining Agreement or Employment Contracts, as authorized by Colorado Revised Statute 24-6-402, subsection 4E3. Those invited to join the board and interim superintendent in executive session are Assistant Superintendent Scott Nielsen and Tracy Guile, Executive Directors Vicki Thompson and Dave Montoya, Legal and Policy Counsel Autumn Aspen, and Board Assistant Secretary Jill Bruner.
Thank you, Naomi. And I have a second from DJ Anderson. So Jill, could you do a roll call vote, please?
Aye.
Nate Donovan?
Aye.
Kristen Draper?
Aye.
Kristoff Fev?
Aye.
Naomi Johnson?
Aye.
Rob Pedersen?
Aye.
Carolyn Reed?
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0.
Thank you very much. So we will reconvene in executive session once we close the doors and I guess, yeah, oh, okay, get rid of Tessa and open, there you go. And I think Vicki's joining us.
9:00 PM, we're back in the regular meeting. And Naomi, would you read the motion for the next executive session, please?
I sure will. I move that the board enter executive session to confer with the attorney for the board for the purpose of receiving legal advice on an ongoing administrative matter as authorized by Colorado Revised Statute 24-6-402 subsection 4B and Colorado Revised Statute Section 24-6-402 subsection 4H. Individuals invited to join the board and interim superintendent in executive session are Assistant Superintendents Scott Nielsen and Tracy Guile, Legal and Policy Counsel Autumn Aspen, and Board Assistant Secretary Jill Bruner.
Thank you. Do I have a second? I do from DJ Anderson. And Jill, could you do a roll call vote, please?
DJ Anderson?
Aye.
Nate Donovan?
Aye.
Kristin Draper?
Aye.
Kristoff Fev?
Aye.
Naomi Johnson?
Aye.
Rob Pedersen?
Aye.
Carolyn Reed?
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0.
Thank you. Okay, as soon as we get the TV turned off and the doors closed, we'll be in the next executive session.[1504.47]
It's 10:03 PM and we're back in the regular meeting long enough for me to adjourn the meeting.
Ooh, they all left!
They all left.
Krista, that was a great job.